I would like to make a few brief statements to address some of the comments made in the last forum meeting, which was held two weeks ago, in this previous meeting. First, the former individual is sitting down at the end of these tables. The nearest few are not members of the State Board of Education. They are Department of Education staff and their hair loss specialists should issue the rise in their areas of expertise of media. They are fully expected to continue working as needed for projects, stopping only the others. Second, I am more concerned about the change in location from one state office building to this building, but that is outside of our control. We had learned from the first meeting that it had here when high volume people came to speak, and two weeks ago we were fully ready to accommodate many more individuals and actually came in overflow rooms where the sound issues had been addressed. Lastly, we do not control CTEs. We can make a request, and if they are unable to provide some, as was the case at the last meeting, we make the video acceptable on YouTube, which initiates the deep, deep meetings. I would ask that all of you, when speaking, straight when speaking, honor Governor's order and everybody else's concern. Please wear your mask. We will begin right again with honors our request.
Wasn't the mask mandate listed in Hartford, February 1st?
Yeah.
In Hartford?
Yeah, but that's where it was lifted.
That's where it was lifted.
That's where it was lifted.
It was listed in Hartford?
It is the State Office of Education. Mayor's order does not control it.
I understand, but the mask mandate in Hartford, Connecticut, was listed?
It was.
It was listed, listed.
This is absolutely ridiculous and unacceptable to put in there. It was absolutely ridiculous.
Okay, we will now start public participation. Do you have an overflow room? Why don't you call two people at one time and give them time if you're in overflow room to come? I do ask if you come to the mic sometimes to state your name so that it goes into our records correctly. Thank you. We would start with Catherine Rowe, followed by Elizabeth Brown.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to provide comments to the State Board of Education at your February 2nd board meeting. My name is Catherine Rowe. I'm the Chair of the Education Educational Psychology Department at Western Connecticut State University and representative of the AACTE Connecticut. AACTE is an association of 13 public and private colleges/universities that provide educated preparation programs to students interested in education profession. We promote and strongly support high-quality teaching and education in state schools and advocates for both robust educational leadership. On behalf of the AACTE Connecticut, thank you to the Boards of Education, Commissioner Russell Tucker, the Department of Education, and especially those individuals whom many of us from AACTE Connecticut work with on a regular basis. As you are aware, school districts are experiencing a critical shortage areas for teaching, teachers, administrators, and staff. Western Connecticut State University, in collaboration with other AACTE EPPs, continue to work to adjust the issue. To adjust the immediate need, we partner with high-needs local school districts and provide support using teacher candidates as daily substitutes, tutors, and paraprofessionals. But we need more. As overall college enrollment needs more is down, the same holds true for teacher education programs. We're looking to help with our recruitment efforts, to identify funding sources to help attract and retain high-quality diverse candidates, as well as enforcing student loan reforms. AACTE will continue to work together with the Department of Education, the Board, and the various educational stakeholders, such as the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, the Connecticut Association of Board of Education, and other education organizations where appropriate. Please continue to feel free to reach out to our association on issues of mutual interest, our faculty and staff, our resources, if you get the opportunity to address the board this morning. Look at that.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Brown, Beth Soleris.
Hi, good morning. Elizabeth Brown was unable to attend. I'm Meg Scotta in her place. I am from Portland, Connecticut. I am Rob, the Vice President of Government Relations at CAPE, which is the Connecticut Association of Board of Education. I'd like to offer testimony this morning regarding masking in our schools. Connecticut Association of Board of Education commends the actions Connecticut has taken to protect the health and safety of our public school students and staff while enabling our students to receive the extraordinary benefits of in-person instruction. The collaboration of the Department of Education and the public health guidance that was provided has been invaluable. From the experience of school districts in the past two years, we know the compliance with a suite of mitigation strategies based on Department of Health and Department of Education operational and safety rule is critical. Recognizing that the public health crisis continues, we urge you to continue to support statewide requirements to protect health and safety in our school environment, based on public health guidance. As the executive order requiring masking in schools is about to expire, it's important that that mask policy going forward continues to be based on relevant health data. With so much anxiety and uncertainty created by the pandemic, there must be concrete benchmarks for the elimination of the mask requirement. School board members and superintendents are not epidemiologists, and we will need to continue to rely on the expertise of our public health officials. Statewide actions continue to provide the best opportunity for continuity of in-person instruction, which is so important to our students. So thank you for your continued support for public education and an opportunity to address you this morning. Thank you.
Beth Soleris, Connie Tavoliski.
Good morning. Before I introduce myself and the reasons that I'm here, I would like to just take a few seconds of my three minutes and thank everybody here for all the work that's being done to help our Connecticut students continue their learning and ensure that it's some of the best being offered here in Connecticut. My name is Beth Soleris, and I'm a Connecticut certified teacher, and I'm a mother of three children who have had the honor and privilege to graduate from Connecticut's esteemed public schools. I'm also a regional manager for ESS. ESS is an educational staffing company, and we support school districts by partnering with them and providing them substitute teachers. We recruit, hire, and train substitutes so that they can support the schools. I'm here today in my capacity as a regional manager for ESS and a complement advocate of education. We are all working actively and tirelessly in our respective roles to help keep students the ability to have quality education and helping them to stay in school where we know that's where they're doing their best learning. As you are, of course, aware, across the country, we are watching an increased number of teachers exiting their positions, many different reasons, from the pandemic, COVID, pay, and stress. But this unprecedented number of vacancies, combined with higher-than-average absences and a national shortage of substitutes, is a very huge challenge for school districts to ensure the proper classroom coverage for their students so that they can remain in the classroom. I am here today to respectfully ask for a couple of things that may help increase the likelihood and ability to offer classroom coverage for school districts. In order to get hired, substitutes go through the same clearance process that teachers do. All substitutes, before they get hired, get fingerprinted, and they have an FBI and state background check. This is good, and this is important, and should not be changed. However, substitutes hired directly by a school district pay $13.25 for these two background checks. Substitutes that are hired with the staffing agency, like ESS, pay that plus an additional $75. Added a processing fee to that, before they can even get hired, they're asked to pay over $90 to get the clearances needed to be a substitute. Most of, or not most, but many, do not even make that amount in a day. This makes that cost prohibitive for many people to become substitutes that would otherwise like that opportunity. What I'm asking is that substitutes that work for a school district, whether they're hired directly by the district or they're partnered staffing agencies, pay the same amount so that we can increase our applicant pool. Approximately 30% of interested applicants must decline going through with the process due to the cost. So reducing that cost for people to get hired to be a substitute would allow us to increase our applicant pool for a more diverse group of people that want the opportunity but can't afford it. ESS and other staffing agencies support approximately 25% of Connecticut schools. So this would affect a substantial number of districts, schools, and students. Secondly, it's possible if teachers that are non-certified can be placed in long-term positions just for this school year. There's a shortage of teachers not in the school but to be substitutes, and a temporary order would help. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, it's Patricia Tavoliski. Hi, it's Patricia Tavoliski. I'll be speaking, and a lot of us will, on behalf of teachers who are afraid to come forward for retaliation. They have sent us letters and asked us to have their voices heard. Hi, I'm sharing personal information as a reading specialist for kindergarten 2-5 and a parent of a kindergarten first grade student. The kids are not okay. We have readers who are subjected that shouldn't be. Long-standing research supports the need to read fluently and with strong comprehension on grade level by grade three. They particularly, in particular, serve graders, but all students in their development stages as well. They have missed crucial moments for physiological awareness and psychological and emotional availability for learning that we won't get back, and it's not done yet. These students and many more to come, longer, and the list goes on longer and longer, will forever feel the impact on their learning trajectory from literacy and confidence in learning. Additionally, students who would typically receive reading services in a small group are combined with learning casualty students receiving intervention as a result of the mask. We have not hired additional staff. The water dump service, as a result of increased numbers, has lasting negative effect. I have witnessed this myself with my own kindergarteners. Favorite part of the day is going to the bathroom so she can take her mask off. Masking students with no evidence and support is harmful academically and emotionally. Kids can fake it. They can say what they think you want to hear. If you really want to listen, the kids are not okay. There's a pending paper that was written by three doctors, an epidemiologist, an associate professor at Tufts University, and Brad Childman. If you look out there, there are studies. We're tired of hearing there's no studies. There are studies. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention updated its guidance in masks. And we're saying that respirators, such as N95s, are more productive than surgical masks. We're not putting our children in N95s. They have to be fitted properly by the law of it. As parents and grandparents of school-aged children, we have also noticed a disturbing pattern, especially during the Omicron surge, punitive mask culture. This has taken many forms. Some older children, for example, have been given detentions, suspensions due to mask slippage or improper mask wearing. Young children have also been subjected to harsh rules to minimize the spread of COVID during lunch hours, meant when it's their only mask-free time of the day sometimes. Some are eaten to hold in silence during meals, others have been expedited lunches. Are instructed to pull their mask down, take a bite, and put their mask back up and chew. Activities intended to relieve stress, including recess and gym, have now curtailed because of the danger of increased exhalation. The Omicron wave will soon be behind us. We urge public health and school officials to educate the communities on one-way masking, emphasizing personal choice regarding self-protection, supporting those who choose to remain maskless and those that choose to wear a mask. Time and energy that staff spend policing masks uses far better spent on teaching and supporting our children. It's time we stop worrying about what others are doing, start focusing on protecting ourselves. We have many more tools in the 2022 that we didn't have when we first started this to protect ourselves. There are more tools out there than you realize. Our children have sacrificed a lot to protect us. Now it's time for us to give them their childhoods back. There are 36 states currently, right now, with in-person learning that do not have mandates for masks. Do you think all of those states are failing their children? The Department of Public Health is failing all those children? I urge you to read the pending paper.
Your time is up.
That schools and safety make the decision on the new CDC guidelines.
Jeanie Wigan, Erin McCall. One-way standards.
Good morning, board members. My name is Jeanie Wigan. I live in West Hartford, Connecticut. I am here today calling on you to stand up and end the mitigation tactics in Connecticut schools immediately. The mitigation tactics are caused by suicide, suicide attempts, self-harm, depression, anxiety, bullying, segregation, discrimination, failing grades, achievement gaps, drug overdoses, breathing difficulties, developmental delays, excessive fear and unnecessary fear, phasic morphia, or, yeah, phasic morphia, and much, much more. These are statements made by Connecticut students. I would like to know what my friends look like. Some of my friends hide behind their masks. They use their masks to hide their ugliness, which isn't true. They aren't ugly. These mitigation tactics are affecting everyone I love and they need to stop. Another student: I can't go back to virtual and kiss your ass every time. I don't want to say anything bad, but I honestly might kiss suicidal. You can't keep your grades up. They don't teach you. They just teach you to look at a screen for 12 hours a day. Another student: I can't handle it. I don't know what to do. My boyfriend won't stop asking me to get the vaccine. I don't know what to tell him anymore. My parents don't want me to get it because there's no science showing it's safe for people with heart issues from COVID like I do. I have so much anxiety because of pressure. I can't handle it. In a Hartford Courier article last week, the Secretary of State said that the executive powers will be extended so our state can receive $32 million. That means our children will be kept in masks, quarantining, social distancing, we promote learning on the table, worth money. The growing mental health crisis was initially the legacy of the pandemic. Two years later, it is no longer the legacy of the pandemic. It is the legacy of the mitigation tactics, and it is your legacy, the State Board of Education and Governor LaLanne. All of the suicides are on your conscience at this point. All of the kids who are failing out of high school and have lost college opportunities on your conscience. All of the children who are behind the reading and having speech difficulties on your conscience. The overdoses in Hartford on your conscience. The kids who passed out or are bored from wearing a mask, those kids are on your conscience. The children who now hide behind their masks because they think they are ugly, they are on your conscience. The excessive achievement gaps in our cities that are growing on your conscience. The bullying and optimization of unvaccinated students, your conscience. The harm, your conscience. Stop allowing the unions to bully you. It's even executive orders that do nothing but harm children. It is not the job of the children to protect the teachers. The teachers in these camps are being selfish and irrational. Omicron is not part of the flu at this point. It wasn't originally, it is now. And at this time in history, we are, what time in history have we thrown the children in front of us for the irrational and selfish demand of the adults? I implore you to fix it and the mitigation tactics immediately. You will see a tangible improvement in the children's mental health. Save our children.
Good morning. This is Aaron McCall, Noggin County, Connecticut Board of Education. How are you? I have a couple comments, but before I told someone I would read a letter, they couldn't be here today. So this is from, my name is Michael Constanza. I live in Lisbon, and I'm a sixth-grade teacher in North Stonington. Today, it's me on behalf of the group Constitution State Educators, in the hopes of making it known to you, the teacher unions do not speak for us. Over the last two years, we have watched in dismay of state, our school districts have responded to COVID-19 by placing the heaviest burden on our students. The children have suffered through the school closures, distance learning, absurd quarantine protocols, vaccine shaming and social pressure, and relentless masking. These measures have proven to be a disaster, not just academically, but also mentally and emotionally. We've watched as the governor and the state agencies treat teachers with contempt through intrusive vaccine and testing mandates that have unforgivable trampled our most basic freedoms and ended the careers of some of your most dedicated educators, all while utterly and completely failing to stop the spread. Sadly, the state teachers unions, CEA and AFT-Connecticut, have not only failed to stand up for these teachers and our students, but also ignored or even belittled teachers who have asked for support. In fact, the unions have been cheerleaders for the governor's abuse of power. Concerned teachers have appealed to every level of government, to school boards, to state legislators, to the governor himself, and to you. With all the evidence in your own common sense, will you not now, once and all, speak up against the extension of emergency powers and speak for the end of medical mandates in school employees and speak for our children's right to breathe freely with no force masking? We invite teachers and all school employees who are frustrated with the union's refusal to stand up for what's right, to join us at Connecticut Constitution State Educators. We will devote our energies this year to helping teachers learn how to lead these unions and to join instead alternative practices. I wrote that for the comments because they couldn't be there today, but I have a couple more seconds. I'd like to tell you my own. You know, it's crazy if these nuts and myself even come out to talk to you guys. We've tried facts and knowledge and all that stuff, and it's all ridiculous. I'm so glad that, like, this week you canceled the medical meeting that we take every Tuesday because who wants to answer questions like, should we set up a table for vaccinated and unvaccinated people? Because, you know, we love segregation and discrimination. I really applaud you guys. I can't wait to see what attached to more money, what more regulations, what more things we can do. You know, the CDC said that masks don't work, but let's keep wearing them. Let's put on two, three, four. I love it. We keep it coming. I appreciate you guys so much. You keep it all working really hard, and we thank you for all the time and effort you put into not educating our students, controlling them, and punishing students because we can't punish their parents. And because we can't because of the parents, let's just keep getting their kids because we know how to kick them when they're down. Thanks.
I'm allowing her to go because she has to leave. So she's going my place, and I'm going to pick her place later. Just so you get your name.
Good morning, yes. Mary Galvin, South Windsor, Connecticut. Before I get into this, I think it was kind of comical when I was driving in. Everywhere you see Constitutional Plaza, Constitutional Plaza. And I'm sitting before you guys today because you're supporting things that violate our constitutional rights. So I thought that was kind of humorous as I was driving in. Where to begin? I guess I'll start with an analogy. When a tutor was to come into your home and wanted to harm your family, especially your children, you would do whatever it took to stop them at all costs, including and up to giving your very life. The parents that have been speaking here today and will continue to speak, I am confident that they have the courage to do whatever it takes to protect the children. But as for you, the board, I'm not so sure that you guys have that courage. I'm not so sure that you guys would go the ultimate mile to protect your children. I say this because you put our children in harm's way every single day with the way that you support the mandates, the policies, CRT curriculum. You are putting our children in harm's way every day with these harmful policies, unconstitutional mandates, divisive demonic curriculum of CRT that is being taught in our schools. Your standing by and allowing our children to be harmed physically, mentally, emotionally, and your staunch failure to do anything about it and to do what is right has shown us that you're not listening. You're not listening to us parents. You're not listening. We've been here over and over, and we're talking about the same thing over and over again. So that just tells me, it's not that you're listening, not listening, it's that you just don't care. What does it have to take and what will it take for this board to grow and find and say no? Some harmful mandates, unconstitutional mandates, harmful policies, harmful curriculum. What does it take? What will it take? Is it going to take a lawsuit? Does it take a judge to pull down his gauntlet before you guys will step up and do what is right? Each and every single one of you took an oath that you would protect the children of both Constitution, that you would do these things, but yet you fail miserably at it every single day. So again, I pose the question to you. What is it going to take for you to say no? When will you begin to actually do your job and listen to us parents and help us protect our children?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Mary Yorden. I'm an Easton, Connecticut resident, and the mother of four grown children. I'm a certified French and social studies teacher, currently on full-time release to do union work. I'm speaking today as AFT Connecticut's Vice President for Pre-K-12 Educators, which includes approximately 10,000 certified teachers in 19 local, regional, and state school districts. We additionally represent another 5,000 pair of educators and school-related personnel covering the whole gamut of non-certified employees in 39 districts. AFT Connecticut strongly believes that students and teachers need to be in school if it is possible to be there without inappropriate risks. The CDC says this: "In K-12 settings, CDC recommends universal indoor masks regardless of vaccination status." We are asking this board to recommend that the school mask mandates stay in place. We are very highly vaccinated. We are very cautious, but there is still a lot of COVID in our schools. It is not a comfortable time, but we all show up and do our job. We find satisfaction in being in school with our students, and we do our best to reduce risk with vaccinations, boosters, distancing, masking, hand washing, and other strategies. With these school-wide and individual efforts, we reduce risks and therefore illness, and so help the school community stay in person and on target with learning goals as much as possible. In September, at the very beginning of this school year, case rates were low, and then, as you know, rose at the beginning of January to astonishingly high levels and are now trending down. We still have a long way to go before we get back to the infection rates, even in November. There is still a lot of COVID in schools at this time. We do not wish to experience increased risk by removing masks during this period of very high infection rates. It goes on to say that breaches in masks likely explain the few instances of in-school spread of SARS-CoV-2. Let me be clear, teachers hate wearing masks. We can't wait to see our little ones' faces emerging from those masks, but not yet. Students are pretty good at masking, but require reminders. If masks were not mandated, many students would stop wearing them, not because they have made a careful assessment of safety and risk factors, but simply because they can. Also, elementary students are among the group that is least vaccinated and they are not capable yet of making such a health decision on their own. We do hope that mask legislation will provide the flexibility to respond to future lower case rates with relief from masks in schools. For now, we ask for your recommendation to the legislature to see this year through and finish like we started with masks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jenny Gauthier, followed by Ms. Van Gorder. Good morning, my name is Mrs. Jenny Gauthier. I'm a mother, a constituent from the 19th Senatorial District and a former Board of Education member. I am here today because children and education are very important to me. I will be using the duration of my time to read a letter from a Connecticut educator who couldn't be with us today. To whom it may concern, I am a 20-year-old, 21-year-old, 21-year veteran teacher and mom of two daughters. I have seen firsthand the negative effect this pandemic has had on children. One negative effect is the division that has caused within children. Children take on their parent's beliefs for better or for worse and are bringing those beliefs into the classroom, on the playground and school bus. Former innocent children are now calling one another anti-masters, science deniers and sheep. Another negative effect is the fear mongering that is going on. This virus has nearly 100% survival rate for children, yet are being told it is safe if they are not safe to touch or come near their friends. Parents are requiring negative COVID tests for attendance at birthday parties or movie nights. Peer work in classrooms is discouraged. A third negative effect is masking. It has been proven that cloth face masks are ineffective against COVID-19. The particles are so small, they can easily get through a cloth or surgical face mask, yet children are still masked daily. Our teachers are masked daily. This has negative implications in the classroom. You can't learn if you can't hear your teacher articulate sounds, explain a math concept or see her smile to let her know she cares. Children cannot express themselves, they're not asking questions or contributing. The shy kids are becoming even shyer and are hiding behind their masks. Kids need to be kids, they need to know they are not super spreaders or full of germs that can kill their grandma. They need to play with friends and hug them, they need their normal life back. Sincerely, a concerned mom and educator. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Remind the speakers, I know this is going to be popular, please permit us to allow your speaking, because everybody around you.
Thank you, good morning. My name is Dr. Tom Monirini, I am a Connecticut certified teacher, administrator and currently serve as the Executive Director of the Connecticut Association of Schools. Our primary membership is principals and assistant principals across the state of Connecticut. As you form your position on this, the one area of concern that we wanted to express was just that there's consistency in whatever the decision that is made that comes out. If it's left to local control, our concern, especially in districts where, where regional districts that may have two different local boards of health to which contribute to them, it could create confusion and could create issues particularly in those instances. As the boots on the ground who implement the policies from a day-to-day basis, we encourage and ask that you consider that whatever position is taken does provide clear direction and is consistent in terms of our ability to implement. Thank you and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Taylor, Commissioner Russell Tucker. My name is Robbie Goodrich and I'm the Executive Director of Race and Education Advocacy Organization headquartered in Waterbury, Connecticut that fights for racial justice in our schools. Back in September, we came to this board and to speak to the State Department of Education about our community's concerns regarding the planned usage of COVID relief funding for schools. It should be noted that in Waterbury, their planned usage of nearly $150 million, $90 million was going to be dedicated to capital improvement projects in the schools. We disagreed with that. So did our parents and students who believe that those funds should be used to advance racial justice in our schools. So in partnership with other community-based organizations and the leadership of young people in Waterbury, we prepared and submitted a plan to Superintendent Ruffin and the Waterbury Board of Education that highlighted nearly a dozen recommendations that we also shared with you back in September. To highlight some of those, we recommended an investment of $2 million to expand language access for all students and to modernize textbooks, learning tools and materials for the English language learners, T-Saw and bilingual population. To invest nearly $3 million to improve administrator and teacher staff capacities in ways to becoming more culturally responsive and to invest in building culturally responding school buildings to reconstruct and redesign buildings to reflect the cultures and identities of students. So we're here today to sound the alarm once again that Waterbury Public Schools has planned to use millions of dollars to purchase weapons detection systems for our schools. They're just not metal detectors, they're advanced pieces of equipment that use artificial So we're all aware, and we can't be sitting at this table today if we're not aware about the school-to-prison pipeline in Waterbury. We have the most amount of school-based arrests, we also have the most amount of incarcerated adults that have Waterbury home addresses in our Department of Correction. It is a huge problem. Our schools are already hardened with police and policing strategies, so much so that school hallways are viewed by students like prison-like walkways, where students are threatened with arrest for being in the hallway after the bell rings. We don't need these detection systems, the data shows that students have been behaving better over the last five years in ways that the school district is refusing to identify. We don't need these systems because we need to spend this money in a wise and culturally responsive way. We believe budgets, especially school funding, are moral documents. Because we've gotten nowhere with Superintendent Ruffin and the Waterbury Board of Education, we're here today.
Counsel, but my favorite title is, I am a grandmother to two beautiful granddaughters who attend Griswold Public School.
My name is Shelley Davis and I am a paraeducator. I am also Divisional Vice President for PSRP, which is Para Professionals and School Related Personnel for AFT Connecticut. I am also co-chair for the Para Advisory.
Could you welcome Michael Goodrich to your floor with the speaker.
I am Shelley Davis, I am Divisional Vice President for AFT Connecticut for PSRP. I am also co-chair for the Para Advisory Council and we are here today to ask the board to use any CDC guidelines when you are considering any mask mandate. And this would be for the safety of our students and all the paraeducators in Connecticut. Thank you.
Tom Springfellow, followed by Jen Van Gorder.
Good morning, Tom Springfellow from Manchester, I was here last time. As someone, you know, this is Black History Month, actually goes back to 1926, but it's an important month for me and I think it's history for all America, to remember the contributions that we have done beyond slavery, we defended this country and invented many things, and I just wanted to mention a few books for two children, Dr. Mae Johnson, she and I are the same age, but she was the first black astronaut, she has her own foundation, and Dr. Carol Anderson, that's had two of her books, this is the third one that she's written, her fourth one, the second, Race and Guns in Failing, Unequal America, just came out recently. And I think it's important to, you know, understand diversity in our schools. I know someone noticed the anti-CRT approach over the last few months, but we're not understanding it in a balanced way, we just go on teaching it in a flawed way. So I know what everyone talks about, called blind society, we don't live in it, when I found out about threats to black colleges recently over the weekend, bomb threats, swastikas, riots of anti-Semitism and other type of violence across the country. So bringing up race, how to raise a child in a prejudiced world, Kind, Prejudiced World came out a couple of years ago, recommend that. Rethinking Schools with just disability justice, it comes out quarterly, but it's from last year, dealing with students that have disabilities, ESN, because it all counts. And I stand here as a free citizen because I felt insulted by a speaker from last meeting, a third speaker this time, if I don't like it here, go back because of some of the remarks I made. I was born here and I die here as a free black man, I pay my taxes, I'm a retiree, I'm a proud union member of American Postal Workers Union, as my late father worked, he worked with corrections as well as an army vet. And I know what it's like to go through racism, as a gentleman from Waterbury spoken, we do diverse learning, we deal with multiculturalism, even about women's history, everyone, European history too. And I think on the adjective of white, The History of White People, written by Mel Irvin Pinter, Black Professor, and the scripter, but it's a very good book to understand how they discriminated against each other, with the Irish and the English throughout the course of history, it's a very good book that came out 11 years ago, I think in 2010. So I enjoy living in this country and we can do better with COVID, we gotta get the right kind of information out, as some previous speakers have spoken, to balance here today. And that some students do have underlying conditions, whether it be diabetes, politicians that need the vaccination, with the mask, and some students need to go to school with protection. And I think you have to lead by example on the good things and dealing with facts when it comes from the news and not just some propaganda in a negative way and trying to intimidate and threaten people. It shouldn't be that way in any means, we should be free to speak our minds within reason and, like I said, it's a free country, let's live up to our Constitution Declaration of Independence, equality for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Jen Van Gorder, followed by Breach Torotto. My son wanted to speak first, so this is Levi.
My name is Levi and I already forgot what I was gonna say. I'm in fourth grade and we're not allowed to wear hoods in my school because they're not able to identify us, but we still wear masks where they're only able to see our eyes and foreheads. The particles are small enough to go through any mask and I don't see how masks are any different than clothes, I don't know why we can't just go like this and it doesn't count. Let's go Brandon.
Good morning, he missed the bus this morning, so he opted to come with me. My name's Jen Van Gorder, we live in Bristol. I am here again today to voice a concern regarding the mandates and abuse that is going on in the schools with our children. You are all very smart people, you did not get your positions by being dumb, so where is the critical thinking? Nelson Mandela once said, "There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats its children." The children are not okay, they are suffering while under your care, you continue to ignore their suffering, their cries for normalcy. Social emotional learning has been ushered into our schools, trying to teach children social emotional learning while robbing them the basic social cues from facial expressions, keeping them spaced from their friends and instilling fear that their friends can make them sick or they can make their friends sick. Research has shown for decades that social engagement is crucial in a child's formal years, yet for the last two years, all children have seen is masks for eight hours a day. No faces, no smiles, no social cues, only masks. Some kids have never even been to school without a mask on. Science is meant to be questioned and tested, yet those who are in power like our governor just claim those who question their science are guilty of wrong think. We are told that the studies that show that masks don't work are a figment of our imagination done by quack doctors. And seeing the countless reports of COVID vaccination injuries and deaths is also said to be hogwash and fake news. It is now reported that in the last two quarters of 2021, deaths were up 40%. Do you know what has changed since the end of 2021? Vaccine mandates, COVID's been here for over two years, vaccine mandates has changed. Yet your silence continues. Are you okay knowing that children aren't okay hidden behind masks? Will you be pleased with yourself when the long-term studies are done showing that these children never should have been given these gene therapy vaccines while you were instrumental in setting up vaccination clinics for children as young as five years old? Where do you want to be on the side of history when the truth is out? It's so glaringly in front of your face right now, but your silence is deafening. It is time to speak up and tell the governor that the mandates on the children are harmful and the decision to use masks for vaccine should rely fully on the parents. In Sweden, 2 million children attended school unmasked during the whole pandemic and not a single child died of COVID. Most states are mask optional, even New York now is mask optional state. It is beyond time to end this and speak up for the children. The one woman who stated the CDC study for North Carolina, what kind of study, just says, well, there was like 11, was 11 schools and, you know, masks probably worked, that's not a study. Go look at the studies, the actual studies. My eighth grader, when I told her I was coming here today, she actually took a minute to jot down a few little bullet points. She says, if kids don't wear their masks, they get sent to the office instead of being given a mask break. If it is cold outside, they do not get a mask break. If teachers feel too cold, you know how usually there's a temperature thing where you don't go outside of a certain degree of temperature? The teachers, they say, it's rogue, right? They just decide, it's too cold, we're not going outside, no mask break. The only time they can take off their mask is after a 30-minute lunch and as soon as they finish eating, their masks must go up immediately. And my eighth grader eats in the hallway, even though our cafeteria is quite large because they're only allowed two per table. This has to stop. Thank you.
Breach Torotto, followed by Jen Van Gorder.
My name is Brianna Torotto, I live in Bristol, Connecticut, and I come here today just to discuss the effects on masks and how they affect on me and how I'm treated differently due to me being not vaccinated. The governor of Paris has gone on for way too long and he has forced students and parents to follow his mandates. I'm hoping they don't extend it to powers. We want this to end, we want this to end, lose the masks. I have asthma, they expect me to run the miles when I already struggle. Hot air is blowing on my face, feeling like I'm suffocated, and that sucks back into my face. It has been proven masks do not work. The damage is causing kids mentally. Some kids stay hidden behind their masks from their peers and teachers.
and as soon as they finish eating, their masks must go up immediately. And my eighth grader eats in the hallway, even though our cafeteria is quite large because they're only allowed two per table. This has to stop. Thank you."
Brede Torado, followed by Jen Van Gorder.
My name is Brianna Torado. I live in Bristol, Connecticut. And I come here today just to discuss the effects on masks and how they affect on me and how I'm treated differently due to me being not vaccinated. The government of Paris has gone on for way too long and he has forced students and parents to follow his mandates. I'm hoping they don't extend it to powers. We want this to end. We want this to end, lose the masks. I have asthma and they expect me to run the miles when I already struggle. Hot air is blowing on my face, feeling like I'm suffocated. The mask sucks back into my face. It has been proven masks do not work. The damage is causing kids mentally. Some kids stay hidden behind their masks from their peers and teachers. Having masks, how can we tell our friends our struggles when the life of ones they are hidden behind a mask? I actually, I'm treated differently because I am not vaccinated. I sometimes get told if I had. If I didn't. I'm told that I would not get as much trouble if I, for having my mask on, if I was vaccinated. Being asked in front of my others if I'm vaccinated or not is not okay. We know getting vaccinated, you can still get and give COVID, does not, it does not matter. Stop the mandates and follow the science. My parents always made best medical decisions for me. There's no need for the government to do so. I survived cancer because my parents made the best medical decision for me. No one told them what they had to do. They could have refused treatment and let me die. No one told them they had to do anything. I trust my parents to make the best medical decisions for me, not the government.
Good morning. I'm gonna read a statement from Jen Dubey. She is the Chair of Board of Ed of Bristol. "Good morning. My name is Jen Dubey. I am the chairwoman of the Bristol Board of Education and the mother of two high school students. I'm writing to voice my feelings as well as the voices of my friends, colleagues, and constituents. Our students need their normalcy back. They need their liberty and their ability to connect with their peers. Masks, mandates, quarantines, close contacts, all of it. It's time to lay it to rest. It's time to accept that COVID-19 is an endemic and to live our lives. It's time for people to see smiling faces again."
Isabella Bailey.
Hi, my name is Jamie Bailey. I think you guys, most of you already know my situation. My daughter is in jeopardy of not being able to go to school next year. She has an IEP. She has to be provided an education and I will not stop until I am assured that she is provided an education. Education is not a bargaining chip for compliance. She has a constitutional right to an education and the school system has already failed her miserably. No data, no nothing. No, nothing. I just don't understand how you guys are gonna sit here and try to mandate things on our children when that's not your job. This is my child. I will parent her the way I see fit. And you guys need to understand, I got an idea. If you guys want me to vaccinate her, why don't I get a legal document that states if something happens, all of you guys are liable? Would one of you guys sign that document? That's what I thought. That's exactly what I thought. You guys need to do better for our children. Our children are not disabled. These are our children. It is our choice. And you guys should all be ashamed of yourselves. Isabella, you're just fine. What do you want to say?
I love school. I think I love school. I love school.
She said, "I want to go to school." She loves school. She absolutely loves it. She has every right to go. And this is not a bargaining chip for compliance, as I said before. And one more quick thing I would like to say is, I don't mean any disrespect, but as a police officer, you take an oath to uphold the Constitution and to protect our rights. And I feel you did a disservice back there. If you want to know what, February 1st, the mask mandate was lifted. I don't care if it's the government building or state building. Doesn't matter. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, Megan Green. I'm from Cheshire and I have a business in New Haven. First, I'd like to say that, like I did last time, my husband needs to design gas masks and masks. Unless your mask has a proper filter medium and is properly sealed to your face, it does not work. Children are not wearing these masks. If you buy a box of, like, kids masks or whatever, it literally says on the side of the box, "Does not prevent against coronavirus." So there's that. We are taking hypochondria as adults to a whole new level and are creating massive anxiety within our children. We are giving them license to judge, bully, discriminate, and segregate against each other. Do you have children? Do you actually think it's okay to put the fear of adults on children when this virus has a nearly 0% survival rate? You know what I mean? Public speaking is so not my thing, so bear with me. But it's like everyone's afraid to get dismissal. You know, they test for every tiny little headache, every, I mean, it's just, it's causing chaos in the world. I see it every day. It's just insanity. So please stop encouraging this horrible behavior and let our kids be free of these unconstitutional mandates.
Good morning. My name is Lauren Vinalia and I'm gonna say the same thing I did when I was here two weeks ago. Most of you are, but if anyone could just please stop what you're doing, staring at your phones and actually listen, because I mean, I'm here to speak and I'd like you to listen to me. So I'm a parent. I'm also a social worker. I live in Bristol. You know, I could reiterate all the things that have already been said, but you know, the bottom line is, somebody said it. I mean, you guys weren't appointed because you're dumb. You were appointed because they thought you would do a good job. And here we are, y'all sitting behind your masks. Again, masquerade is really what this is. Even the CDC, I mean, someone said we should be following what the CDC says and they said that cloth masks are useless. They're basically a facial decoration and they made that statement. So if we're gonna follow the CDC, then, you know, why don't we do that? So anyway, I just want to bring up a couple of points. I have a child in the middle school in Bristol and, you know, some of the things going on in a particular school are pretty concerning. You know, I sent an email expressing my concern, not just as a parent, but again, as a social worker of over 18 years about the mental well-being, not only of our children, because that alone is gonna be a pandemic. It's already a pandemic, but nobody's paying attention to that one. So that being said, now my nerves just went up. That being said, the mental health and well-being of the teachers too. I mean, the teachers unions are useless. They don't do anything to protect or help their teachers in any way. Let's just be real. So, you know, you want something like somebody mentioned about hypochondria. I mean, some of these teachers are tortured, terrified, completely traumatized. I mean, I haven't seen anything like it. My daughter is being policed constantly. You're gonna make me sick. You're gonna make me sick. Pull your mask up. We have a coach over there, a basketball coach, who's threatening to take kids out of the season if they don't keep their mask above their nose while they're playing basketball. My daughter joined the basketball team. It's great. Their first game, she made a basket. I was ecstatic. It would have been a fantastic picture if she had to have the giant blue thing over her mouth. But hey, you know, let's just take their childhood away because that's what we're doing. To what? Protect adults? We're putting our children on the chopping block. And as someone else said, you all are gonna be on that side of history. Is that the side of history you want to be on? Because this is all gonna come down. It's already happening in Canada, thank God, and it's coming to the USA. So you know what? The time is limited, so you make a decision. How are you gonna proceed? Are you going to protect our children? You know, people are talking about, oh, we want to keep them in school. The kids can be in school without a mask. Again, if a child wants to wear a mask, that's fine. But if a child doesn't want to wear a mask, I have severe PTSD around having my face covered, but nobody seems to care about that. All they care about is this invisible little germ. Well, you know what? I care about my PTSD and it triggers me. And you know what? There are lots of children who have all sorts of reasons why they shouldn't be wearing masks. This one size fits all stuff? I mean, give me a break. I understand. I hear the timer. Bottom line is, I mean, it's not educating anymore. It's policing. School isn't fun anymore. My kids are miserable. They hate it. I have my son, just one brief last comment and then I'll be done. My son, who's nine years old, is being told by his friends that he's going to kill people because his mask is not above his nose. My nine-year-old son is about ready to be the kid, and this is all on his accord, to be the kid to walk into the school without a mask and go sit in the principal's office all day to make a statement. And I had nothing to do with that. He wants to do it. So why don't you think about that? Thank you.
You know, I called this before, but I think you substituted in Susan Zabahansky. Um, Jayden.
Hi, my name is Susan Zabahansky. I am the founder of Parents Choice Connecticut, Families for Freedom. You guys know us. We've been coming here for four months now. It's just disheartening to me to hear teachers' unions representing supposedly thousands, tens of thousands of teachers. You've heard only a minute amount of testimony that we presented anonymously from teachers. There are so many teachers who are afraid to speak up. It's shocking to me that they feel that they're gonna lose their job or be ostracized in their place of work. In Connecticut, we've had over 150,000 cases of COVID in children 19 and under with only seven associated deaths. We don't know. That's just children with COVID. It's quite clear, even though they're trying to scare us, saying that, you know, I don't know what the teachers are afraid of. I'm just not understanding what they're afraid of. The survivability rate for COVID, as we all know, is beyond 99% for most people. The people who feel that they need to be protected can be protected at this stage of the game. This is just hurting the education system in general. I have asked here multiple times for local control on these issues. One gentleman spoke and said, you know, that could cause problems. It's not, this is how our government is supposed to run. It's supposed to be run by local control. There's no reason why a department of public health in conjunction with their Board of Education cannot make these decisions for their districts. It's the way our government is supposed to run. We're not supposed to be run by big bureaucracy. We're certainly not supposed to be top-down government. That's not how the United States works. This should not be a political issue. Everyone should be on board with this. Democrats, Republicans, Libertarians, unaffiliated. They should want local control. That's how our American system of government is meant to run. And I hope that you guys will consider that and put pressure on the governor to say enough is enough. Thank you.
Jayden, followed by Lexing.
My name is Jane Lee Jacobs.
My name is Justine Reyna and I will be reading his testimony because he's a little nervous. Hello, my name is Jayden. I'm here to share about having mask choice. For example, when my dad got COVID, I was at school. So they put me in a private room for two hours. Even though I was far away from people, I still needed to wear my mask while waiting to be picked up. Another example is they took away our outside mask breaks because a couple of students were having bad behavior. Now we do not get fresh air until recess and that is at 1 o'clock. Another example is we have to sit one seat apart from each other at lunch and we have shields between us. Another example is that we can't do group projects and if we do, we have to sit one seat away from each other. Another example is that my little brother does not have any mask breaks at all. My last example is that my dad, even though he wears an N95 mask every day, he still got COVID. And that just shows you that the masks that you are making us wear do not work and means that we are harming our bodies for no reason. My last example is that I can go to the store with no mask and the stores have a lot of people and I really pack and I have to wear my mask at school when we run straight out. Thank you.
Asher, followed by Justine Reyna.
Hello, my name is Lexi and I'm here to ask you to let us have mask choice. Ochella, I'm here to ask you to let us have mask choice. I'm here today missing school to ask you permission of what to do with my body, something that I used to think that I had control over, but now is being mandated by my government. Tell me why my rights as a person is being taken away. Now you have the choice to change that. Knowing our state's history during the pandemic, we all come here to tell you why we deserve our own rights. Teachers have been making the mask situation hard for the kids. They spend the whole class period reminding us where to wear our mask right. They also have been taking away our water breaks. Apparently, we can't drink water all day because we can't drink water in the classroom and we can't go outside because it's too cold and there's no other place for us to go. Kids have told me and my friends that we are the problem of why there's a pandemic, which I like to say is not true. One of my friends, who always wears his mask, got COVID and gave it to my other friends, who also continue to wear the mask all the time. If the mask works, then how did all of those people get COVID? Also, in the beginning of COVID, before school closure, I had a lot of stress and anxiety about school and that led me to have a panic attack. I went to the nurse because I was having trouble breathing. She called my mom and had me isolate in the side room. When I was supposed to leave, my teachers were supposed to give me my stuff and they only gave me my backpack and Chromebook and refused to give me all my other stuff. They thought I had COVID and refused to touch my belongings. Imagine already being stressed and even more because there's no way to finish all my homework that they actually, when I went back, yelled at me for not completing. Also, kids at our school have to wait sometimes more than 30 minutes outside because of a bus and yet they refuse to let us go outside for a couple minutes for a mask break. In my school, they love to talk about equality, so where is the equality for us? I would also like to add that someone who spoke before me said that we are asking the children, we want to continue wearing our masks, but I can guarantee that they have not asked every single one of the students what they wanted. Adults, as in teachers, who are saying we want to keep wearing our masks, stop telling me what I want because you do not know what I want. I want mask choice. Stop speaking for us and let us speak for ourselves. Also, I work with the specialized students at my school. I just started a group. And the teachers have told me firsthand that hiding this is hard for them. They can't understand. It's hard for them, already being, growing up and having all this and having a disability, having autism. Taking away this is making it even more hard for them. The teachers have told me that. Thank you very much. Also, this is Asher Jacobs. He'd like me to speak on his behalf. He said... No, I don't know. Okay. He says, "My brother has to wear..." He says, "I hope there are no more masks. I don't get any mask breaks and neither does my brother. Let us have mask choice. Thank you."
Justine Reyna and Sheri, always Sheri's Morgan.
Good morning. I am Justine Reyna and I am here to speak on something that should have already been in effect long ago, and that is mask choice. When parents came out in the beginning of the pandemic, myself being one to express their concerns and negative effects on the children wearing masks for 60,000 hours, you simply replied to us, "Science," and chose to ignore us. And here we are, a few years later, when the CDC recently admitted that those cloth masks you're making our children wear, using to prevent the spread from COVID, do not actually work. Not only do they not work, they have caused tremendous damage. Our special education system is at risk. Children's mental health issues are at all times high, along with speech delays in the younger generation. And even with all this being told to us and it not being able to stop the spread, you still expect all these children to show up Monday through Friday masked and clothed. masks? Unfortunately, the only thing you seem to care about is COVID. You are ruining our youth, and now the blame is going to be falling on you. It is time to right you wrong. You know nothing about the poor children that I brought with me today. You don't know their names until recently, not their birthdays, not their health issues, favorite foods, or how wearing a mask has personally affected them, yet you all sit here and get to decide what's best for them. As a mother, I will always have the best intentions for my children. I would never purposely put them in harm's way. It is time you give me and all these parents sitting behind me our voices back and let us do what I have been doing for the past 30 years, and that is what is best for my children. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Sherri Norton. I am here today to read the testimony of a teacher who can't be here today. I have been an occupational therapist in a public school for 22 years, and kids are not okay. I have seen an increase in rude, disrespectful, and defiant behaviors in the general population of students. Many students are destroying school properties. I service students with special needs, and I'm hearing the following from them. Kids with hearing impairments report that they have a difficult time hearing the teacher and their peers. One student said, "I can't hear the teacher because of the stupid mask." Kids with intensive needs, who are unable to communicate verbally, become upset and in some cases self-injurious, when told to pull their mask up over their nose. Most wear them on their chin, but there are many adults telling them constantly to pull them up. Some students are so fearful of COVID that they do not want to be in school because they think they could get sick and die. I have students who are clearly struggling to breathe, but insist on wearing two masks or a KN95 mask due to fear. Parents have shared that their children are anxious and don't want to be in school with a mask, and that is affecting their sleep behavior and causing constipation. One boy said, "The principal sets the pledge of allegiance every morning and ends with liberty and justice for all." He said, "There is no liberty and no justice in this school." I asked him why he thought that, and his reply was, "Out there, forcing us to wear a mask." This kid is 10, much more insightful than most adults I know. Another student complained daily that it was too hard to breathe. Upon further investigation, it turns out that the kid has a breathing obstruction and legitimately can't breathe easily, and is scheduled for surgery. He was denied a mask exemption, and as a result, the family has moved out of the state. Lots of students are now more than a year behind academically. This is all anecdotal, but it is easy to see that the kids are not doing well. I see teachers being unkind to students, and they do not have their masks on properly, which is creating animosities for both teachers and students. School is a very unhealthy environment, in my opinion. I hope someday that you'll do the right thing.
Followed by Aileen Jacobson.
My name is Annabelle Minor, and I attend Bristol Central High School. Two months ago, I began my unmasking journey because I was sick of putting my health on the line for a virus that I am vaccinated for and that isn't affecting my age group. Two months ago, I sat in front of you pleading to be heard. I sat here in tears, begging for help. Two months ago, I stood up. I stood up because this piece of cloth, it doesn't even cover my nose. This piece of cloth, it stops nothing, is supposedly preventing the spread of COVID, although this mask is just threatening my life, and nobody cares. It's going against my moral beliefs, and it is putting my life on the line, and not a single person here cares. You're supposed to do something, anything, to protect students like me. I've been emotionally amused by my school, I've been singled out, humiliated, and bullied by my own administration. You heard these events. You sat here on your phone even after I pleaded with you not to. I pleaded with you to do your job and listen to me, a student that attends a public school in this state, but still, I was a burden to you. It was too much for you to sit here for three minutes and listen to the abuse and the trauma that my school has put me through. And every single day since then, it has gotten worse. My school has done nothing but proceed to try to stop me from graduating, and you guys do not care in the slightest bit. I was supposed to be forced to take a month of absence so that they could put a 504 meeting in place for me. That 504 meeting lasted a total of 13 minutes, and it was 13 minutes of my principal demanding to know what my medical illness was, that I could not wear a mask. It was 13 minutes of my principal degrading me and my mother, saying that we are what's wrong with this country and that we are murderers because I cannot wear a mask. I don't know how anybody could sit here and listen to the pain in my voice and still think that everything is okay. That's not a kind of person that is protecting the well-being of the youth in this school system. I've had my final year of education in sports ripped from my hands. My administration will not allow me to participate in sports, although I meet every requirement. My teachers mute themselves so I miss out on class, they yell at me for no reason other than I can, and when it's brought to the administration, nothing is done, but I am punished. A teacher that has singled me out and abused me all year is still teaching. However, I was removed from that class. I am forced to teach myself that class so that I can graduate, so that I can walk. Google is teaching me more than my own teachers are teaching me, and nobody seems to care.
Please wrap up.
I'm not even going to attempt to touch the mask mandate that says I have done nothing wrong. I'm not even going to try to touch everything else that was in my testimony, but what I will say is try to imagine 18-year-old you in my shoes. Imagine 18-year-old you who cannot wear a mask. Imagine 18-year-old you being called a murderer for no reason other than they cannot wear a mask. But this...
Aileen Abrams, followed by Kate Diaz.
Hello, I'm Aileen Abrams. I am a candidate for State Representative of the 78th District, which is Plymouth and Bristol. I'm here with Parents' Choice Connecticut, Families for Freedom, and I'm just one more voice for a teacher who wants to remain anonymous. Dear State Board of Ed, I am a dual-certified Connecticut teacher who has worked in the state for about 15 years. I currently teach high school in Region 4 and taught in Hartford for almost 10 years prior. I have appreciated my work with the SDE and the support I have received from various programs and physicians. All that being said, I can no longer stay silent about my concerns with the continuation of mask mandates for children. As teachers, we spend years studying developmental psychology, learning the importance of facial expression, socialization, modeling language acquisition, and so much more that would clearly negate the use of masks. The most depressing aspect is the intense barrier the mask creates in establishing a strong student-teacher relationship. It is hard to connect with students' social-emotional needs when we cannot even see the look on their faces. It is incredibly sad to see students struggle with verbal responses or peer discussions more than ever before with this physical constraint. It is heartbreaking to miss out on seeing them smile, laugh, and fully express their feelings. I have noticed more reckless behaviors, more disinterest, and more overall exhaustion with this mandate. I hear more distress than ever before and witness a hopelessness that is truly heartbreaking. I think we will look back on these decisions and regret that we have not done more for our children. I strongly urge you to rescind the mask mandate, spend some time with thoughtful data-driven resources, such as those found on the Urgency of Normal site. There alone, you will find a plethora of information curated by medical professionals who are speaking out about how our continued limitations, specifically on school-aged children, is and will continue to lead to grave consequences greater than COVID. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Kate Diaz. I am a veterans' mask teacher from Manchester High School, not an anonymous teacher, one who will proudly put her name on the statements in front of you. And I am currently president of the Connecticut Education Association. I am no stranger to the complexities of the decisions that have to get made when you are dealing with statewide situations. We represent 150 different districts with a great variety in their constituencies and a great many challenges. But what I can speak honestly and openly to today is the question that was asked, what are teachers afraid of? I'm probably one of the only people in the room that spent a year teaching with a mask with students, spending a lot of time and energy, both in-person, online, with students while they were dealing with all of the issues. Sitting with my colleagues as we worry about what does the future look like. I can tell you that what teachers are thinking about is how to keep schools open. They're thinking, how do I continue to provide as much as I possibly can? And to vilify that concern, I think, is a problem. Our teachers have bent over backwards to do everything they can in the last two years to provide compassionate and caring and love to their students. And now, as we kind of turn a corner, we've gone through a really difficult surge that was frightening, but my teachers showed up, they were there, they showed up every day, they got COVID, they quarantined, and they cared for their students all the way through. No one would be happier to say this is over than a group of teachers. But alas, it's not over. My teachers work in buildings that are not properly ventilated. They don't have the beautiful vents that we have in this room to suck air upwards. It's a very real working condition that we take for granted when we sit in this space, but doesn't exist in my teaching spaces. Teachers have to open their windows for ventilation, which when it's negative degrees is a bad idea. So I ask you to think about where the teachers are at. They're sitting in spaces of primarily unvaccinated individuals in poorly ventilated areas, doing the very best that they can to get through an unprecedented situation. So I'd ask that you consider to maintain this mandate for just a little longer. I don't want to see this in perpetuity, none of us do. We look forward to the days where our positivity rates are low and our vaccination rates are high when we're dealing with students. That's just not where we are today. And so, until we can get to the space where I can confidently look at my teachers and say, "We're here, we're going to be here, and there's not going to be any closures," I ask you to think about not squashing them in between yet another debate. They have really been pushed really to their end, and they are trying their very best. But every debate that plays out, plays out in their classroom. As one of the speaker mentioned, all the children will come forward with their parents' beliefs. Thank you for your time, thank you for your hard work, and we appreciate you taking the time to think about us.
Thank you.
Jocelyn Delancey, followed by Mary, did you make that earlier?
Good morning, I'm Jocelyn Delancey. I am the vice president of the Connecticut Education Association, fifth-grade teacher. Unlike Kate, I am a teacher who did teach all year in a mask with fifth graders in an elementary school. I'm fortunate to say that my school was able to teach in-person last year from September 29th all the way through the entire school year, and that is because we were able to use mitigation strategies, masks, and stay safe. What Connecticut teachers want is our schools open. We want to be able to be safe and care compassionately for our students. We know that there will be a time where we can say that this is over and this is enough, but right now is a little premature. We want to keep our schools open, we want to support our teachers, and of course, we want to care and support all of our students with all of the beliefs that they have and all of the needs that they have. And in order to do that, we need to be in-person, we need our teachers healthy, and we need our teachers present and available to teach. So I thank you for the work that you do. I know you come to these meetings and care for every constituent's concern, and I see you listening, and I know that there's a lot of weight on the decisions that you make. But in order to keep our schools safe, open, we need to keep this in place just a little bit longer. And then, as we continue, all we need to consider the things that will continue to keep our students safe, like indoor air quality and making sure that we have highly sophisticated and caring educators in our classrooms. I thank you for your care and your concern, and thank you for listening to us today.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Meredith Nielsen, and I live in Cheshire. I was here two weeks ago to voice my concerns about the manner in which COVID protocols in our schools have come to pass. Being here again with the same message feels redundant, but having to talk at you without the ability to interact makes it difficult to know what you are hearing, what you are thinking, and quite frankly, at times, who is listening. So, in light of the potential extension of the governor's order for masks in school, I will reiterate my message that local boards of education need to have the ability to make these decisions within their own school communities. I don't know where Connecticut stands with the SRF funds for next year. Perhaps districts already have the ability to turn that down, opting out of the masks and other protocols. Either way, no amount of money is worth the consequences that some children are experiencing as a result of some of these protocols. I have been especially disturbed at the amount of pressure my own school district has been putting on our kids to get vaccinated for COVID. It is completely inappropriate, out of line, and quite frankly reckless, and what's the point? We all know anyone can become infected and transmit COVID with or without a jab. I don't know if any of you have children in school. I would have already pulled mine out, but they are teenagers now, and it's not quite so simple. But I can tell you that adolescence was already hard enough without our school administrators pressuring the children, encouraging peer pressure, and allowing our kids to be called out for their pharmaceutical status, a decision for which they are not mature enough nor legally allowed to make. The measures that parents like me are so upset about, masking, jab pushing, distancing, and isolating, are invasive and are not without consequence. Each deserves its own discussion. This board should not be encouraging the universal use of these measures, nor should it be standing idly by. The appropriate place for these discussions and decisions are within each district. School boards across the state are feeling pressure from the top and are shutting parents out. Your own position statement on school, family, and community partnerships states that families are equal partners with staff, together constructing programs, policies, and information. That is certainly not what is being put into practice. Our concerns are being completely ignored, which is why we are here. I ask again that you speak up and advocate for the district to work these issues out as they see fit. Thank you.
Mary Galen, followed by Mona Colwell.
Is Suzanne John?
Well, Mona, I'm here. I'm Mona.
Are you right?
Jacob.
Oh, Suzanne Jacob.
Here's Mona.
Okay, Mona, why don't you go ahead. Mona Dowden, she's in that very high room. After you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mona.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I've been here four months now, I think, and I appreciate all your time, I really do. I want to share with you that I sent this email on December 7th after listening to the Board of Ed Department of Health call. I sent this to Tom St. Louis, who's an epidemiologist who is giving advice to all of our school districts. I attended the Board of Ed DPH call on December 7th for school districts throughout Connecticut. And you mentioned, you mentioned, I was addressing this to him, two things about policy that I found interesting. The first was that some children get to participate in activities. You said these activities are things a person gets to do because they're vaccinated. I wonder if you have seen some of the data that there is infection and transmission among vaccinated children and adults. Many of us on the call know vaccinated people can catch and spread COVID. So it's difficult to understand why some children are considered more privileged by the State Department of Health when all are just as infectious. There are reasons parents are waiting, including natural immunity. The vaccines are still in experimental stages, and the risks of participating in the trials are great. Many parents are unwilling to experiment with their children, especially since the vaccines do not prevent transmission. If segregating those with the vaccine does not provide any health benefit and in fact leads to pressure, coercion, manipulation towards those who are being discriminated and excluded from activities, is this really a healthy policy? Could this pressure be in any way leading to the increased depression and suicides among our Connecticut children? I don't know the answer, but that's, I certainly believe the State Department of Health should consider how this policy does not make sense in light of science and data. Second, you mentioned something about the COVID problem being solved if people get their kids vaccinated by Christmas. This is troubling for several reasons, including that there is no FDA-approved vaccine available in the United States, regardless of what everybody thinks. There are no long-term studies of these vaccines on children. Plus, we know that the science and data show that children without the vaccine are extremely resilient in overcoming the virus. I'm concerned that as an epidemiologist from the Department of Health, he could be leading, I wrote this to him, said, he could be leading people to a false reality. And I really, I understand, so many of you guys have all been led to this false reality because do you believe what he is saying? It would be extremely imperative that everything you speak is 100% accurate and factual. It would also be very alarming if the public relies on you and your advice is incorrect. For example, there's no reality of every child ever getting fully vaccinated. So to say we can eliminate the problem with mass vaccination would be the same as saying the problem isn't going away by Christmas. And it certainly didn't, did it? But I believe that it's the opposite of what people may have interpreted by his remarks. As an expert, we're relying on him, and he's just not even telling the truth. In addition, we already know vaccinated people catch and spread COVID, so the statement that mass vaccination would get rid of the problem cannot be true without getting, about getting rid of COVID. People would wish it and they would hope it, but this is a person that we're relying on for state information. There's plenty of other trusted people out there outside of Tom St. Louis from the Connecticut Department of Health that we should be listening to. And I feel bad that all of you guys have been relying on people like him who are giving false information, and this is two months old. We also just learned on the most recent call.
Thank you, Matt. You have to wrap up.
I understand. On the most recent call with the DPH, they are relying on protocols created a year ago. Is that fair to you and to all of us in the state? No! A lot has changed in recent years. And you guys, you should not be relying on this inaccurate information. Thank you.
Suzanne Jacob. I'm Jessica Murray. Suzanne, you'll be our last speaker.
Good morning. My name is Suzanne Jacob. I am a registered nurse. My husband is a state trooper. We have worked through this pandemic from the beginning. We were ostracized from our families in the beginning because nobody wanted to be around us because of our exposure to the virus. And I am here to support mask choice in school. Health and safety doesn't come from a paper or a cloth covering our faces or a vaccine. My children know that, but the majority of children don't. Health comes from eating a balanced diet, from playing outside every day, getting regular exercise, taking vitamins, spending less time on screens and more time interacting with friends and family, being mindful of their emotions and how their emotions are affecting their behavior. Safety is wearing a helmet or riding your bike, looking both ways before crossing the street. Learning that a police officer is someone that you can trust when you're in trouble, not someone you should fear. The large majority of severely ill hospitalized COVID patients are overweight or obese. With that in mind, how many children have we set up for their future health with restricting them from playing sports and increasing the amount of time they sit sedentary in front of a screen? The social, psychological, and educational damage to our children that has come from this pandemic will not be exposed for years to come. Neither of my children have played with any of their friends from school for two years. My 11-year-old was invited to a friend's house, but only with a negative COVID test. How did we get here? We are five months into the school year and my sixth grader does not know the names of the classmates in his homeroom. We are robbing our children of their childhood. I am in support of mask choice, so if that is what someone chooses, please, please get fitted and use an N95 because according to the CDC, that is the only way that an individual can protect themselves from contracting COVID. Again, please stop the mandates.
Motion. My phone, you can check if it's in there. Yeah, okay. Yeah, right now. We're just waiting to give the CTEC.
Yeah, I've been keeping him a fry. I'm emailing him down.
I'm glad for you. So I think you can give the CTEC. Okay. Yeah. The jumper has that. All the journals and the comments.
Yeah. I'm hoping people wait until 10:00 or 11:00.
Don't move.
Second, second.
New discussion. On favor.
Hi. Hi. Sure. Have CTEC. What do we do? CTEC, okay. They're going to change, change it up a little bit.
You're talking, I didn't think.
Yeah. Yeah. For the people, for the staff in the room, we are finishing to item six A. Ellen, you can actually have a minute.
Excellent. CTEC transition report.
Do you need a motion? Don't move. Second. We're trying to just leave the word now. We're trying to agree on the CTEC transition. I mean, I have to remember breaking the launch. Okay. You have a picture of her. Do you want to? You want to? You want to? I think I'm going to. I'm sleeping too long. That's what we need. The special one. I'll tell you, come on, there will be. Okay.
Good morning, members of the State Board of Education. It is indeed our pleasure to have the opportunity to review the report that I guess you have been anxiously waiting to hear more about, the transition and preparation plan for CTEC. I'd like to start by saying that we had a mission well-established when we began to craft this plan going forward. And that mission was that we could successfully, as an organization, transition to an independent state agency on July 1st, 2022. And that CTEC would be led, or will be led, by an executive director who is appointed by the governor. Those two facets alone prove to be a significant change in the dynamic for the organization now known as CTEC. As you may or may not be aware, CTEC is a world-class career, technical, and academic education organization. We provide education to nearly 12,000 secondary and 3,000 post-secondary students annually. As present, CTEC is created and maintained by the State Board of Education under the supervision of the Commissioner of Education, Charlene Russell Tucker. The system is advised by an 11-member CTEC board, whose membership includes Connecticut leaders from industry, trade, and government. In 2017, the Connecticut General Assembly passed legislation to make CTEC an independent state agency. That declaration is attached as attachment A in your report. So then this report is a report on the progress of our transition to an independent agency as pursuant to that public act. We declared that we had two fundamental purposes in establishing the separation from the State Department of Education in order to become an independent state agency. The first is around oversight and accountability. As an independent agency, CTEC will receive direct fiscal oversight from the Superintendent of Schools, Executive Director, and OPM. Second, we see as part of the separation improved operational efficiencies across the board. The CTEC Executive Director will enhance CTEC's ability to focus on the academic mission while expanding its continuum of trade offerings, as it currently does. At this time, I would like to introduce Attorney Susan Scott, who has done extensive work on this particular report, and Attorney Scott will address the board in terms of the fundamental, the fundamentals of CTEC as an independent agency and the legislative impact.
I serve as the legal director for CTEC, and I joined three years ago. My position exists specifically for this purpose because we were separating. And we are very excited to be here today to bring this to you. The legislature in 2017 set forth one request to the State Board of Education in this process of giving them an update on the transition. And I think the update is mostly good news that we're on target for July 1st and that we've been working for the last two years to make sure that we can anticipate all the needs. Now, with regard to CTEC itself, you know, we are created by law. We are a creature of the law. And right now, the State Board of Education establishes and maintains us. And so the changes that will go into place on July 1st have largely been already written into the law, but there will be some revisions that we need to have in order to make sure that things go, our operations go more fluidly and there's coherence within the statute. So the three areas I want to talk about a little bit today are our executive director, as that person will start in July, appointed by the governor, and a little bit about the role of the superintendent, also the role of the board, because our board will change a little bit with this transition. So our executive director is the agency head, and this person shall have, quote, "experience with educational systems." But that is really all that's required under the law. They are responsible for the system operation and the fiscal accountability. Their focus will be on the central office system and system-wide management and non-educational matters. Their authority, like most agency heads, is to organize the system into units and divisions to approve contracts, to appoint employees and subordinates, to accept gifts and donations on behalf of the system, and also to enter into cooperative agreements. This person will communicate directly with the Secretary of OPM when requesting the creation or filling of staff positions, with a priority being given to our instructional staff. This person will be responsible for reviewing the education budget that is prepared by the superintendent and preparing the operating budget, including the central office budget, and then submitting it to OPM and the Joint Standing Committees on Education and Appropriations for State Agencies. Our executive director will report any financial inconsistencies or irregularities to, in that person's review of the education budget, to OPM, to DAS, and to the Auditors of Public Our chief fiscal officer will report directly to the executive director. So in our package in attachment E is our legislative proposal. And so everything that I've told you about the executive director so far is already written into the law, but we do want to make a couple of suggested changes, which is in our legislative proposal. In one area, we want our executive director to take the lead on providing information to the Joint Standing Committees on Education, Higher Education, Employment, and Labor in the legislature, and also to make reports on bonding issues regarding buses. This is just, right now, it's written as the superintendent will do that, or asking the executive director to have that authority. We're also looking to have the executive director make the final decision on any potential issue of school closure. Now, we're not thinking about doing any of that right now, just want to alarm anyone, but there is a section in our law about if it came to be that a school needed to, we needed to consider closing a school, you're going to give, right now, the way that law is written, the State Board of Education would hold hearings. Somehow, when in 2017, I think they just overlooked that that would need to be transferred to our board and to our executive director to make that decision. So the superintendent, who will be someone who is recommended by the CTEC board and approved by the executive director, will serve for three-year terms. It can be renewed, but not for more than three years each time. That's consistent with what a lot of local and regional Board of Education, they do because of another state law. Our superintendent is responsible for the operation and administration of our schools and all other matters relating to career and technical education, including our post-secondary education. Their focus is on all of the education matters. Our superintendent is responsible for preparing the education budget, including educational and school-based accounts and expenditures, the budget for each school, and a statement of the staffing need. That budget is then submitted to the executive director, who, as I explained before, will then pass it on to the other authorities. So our legislative proposal, again, attachment E, what we're looking for- Our Executive Director will report any financial inconsistencies or irregularities in that person's review of the education budget to OPM, to DAS, and to the Auditors of Public Our Chief Fiscal Officer will report directly to the Executive Director. So, in our package, in Attachment E, is our legislative proposal. And so, everything that I've told you about the Executive Director so far is already written into the law, but we do want to make a couple of suggested changes, which is in our legislative proposal. In one area, we want our Executive Director to take the lead on providing information to the Joint Standing Committees on Education, Higher Education, Employment, and Labor in the Legislature, and also to make reports on bonding issues regarding buses. This is just, right now, it's written as the Superintendent will do that. We're asking the Executive Director to have that authority. We're also looking to have the Executive Director make the final decision on any potential issue of school closure. Now, we're not thinking about doing any of that right now, just want to alarm anyone, but there is a section in our law about if it came to be that a school needed to, we needed to consider closing a school, you're going to give, right now, the way that law is written, the State Board of Education would hold hearings. Somehow, when in 2017, I think they just overlooked that that would need to be transferred to our Board and to our Executive Director to make that decision. So, the Superintendent, who will be someone who is recommended by the CTEC Board and approved by the Executive Director, will serve for three-year terms. It can be renewed, but not for more than three years each time. That's consistent with what a lot of local and regional Board of Education, they do because of another state law. Our Superintendent is responsible for the operation and administration of our schools and all other matters relating to career and technical education, including our post-secondary education. Their focus is on all of the education matters. Our Superintendent is responsible for preparing the education budget, including educational and school-based accounts and expenditures, the budget for each school, and a statement of the staffing need. That budget is then submitted to the Executive Director, who, as I explained before, will then pass it on to the other authorities. So, our legislative proposal, again, Attachment E, what we're looking for in changes regarding our Superintendent, has to do with codifying the need for the Superintendent to be certified in a similar way that Superintendents of large districts in the state have to be certified, and also empowering the Superintendent to create policies for the operation of the schools. I'm sure you are all familiar with the literally hundreds of policies that are, that every school district in the state has to have, often by state and federal law. So, to enable the Superintendent to take the lead on that. And then, also, for the Superintendent to be evaluated by the Executive Director in consultation with our Board, which is, it's a similar process, but not exactly the same as what happens for local and regional Boards of Ed. Now, with regard to our Board, we currently have an 11-member Board. Two of your ex-officio members here are on our Board. What's going to happen as of July 1st is that that Board will be reconstituted. It will still be 11 members. Some of the members who are on the Board right now will probably continue to be members in their, because of their titles that they carry right now. That Board member, our Board members include the Commissioner of Economic and Community Development, the Commissioner of Labor, the Chief Workforce Officer, and of course, the Commissioner of Education will now become a Board Member. The other, there are three unspecified Board Members, and then there are two members that are supposed to have experience in manufacturing or a trade offered by CTEC, and two members who are executives of Connecticut-based employers. All of these would be ultimately appointed by the Governor. Our Board is an advisory board. It will continue to be an advisory board. They have limited authority with regarding policy, but they, there are certain areas they do have authority over, including the admissions and standards for student achievement. Our legislative request with regard to our Board is that, it's actually pretty minor. There's only a couple of additions. One, that the members of the Board may not be employees of CTEC, and also that our ex-officio Agency Heads that belong on our Board are considered to be voting members. So, that pretty much sums up the requests that we're making under our legislative proposal. The legislative proposal, granted, is kind of long. Much of what is in there are just technical revisions. We're replacing the word "State Board of Education" with either our Executive Director or our CTEC Board. This is just cleaning up the statute so that it's clear that we are now a separate agency, and either our Executive Director or our Board will be taking over the roles that were once played by the State Board of Education, the Commissioner of Education, and the State Department of Education. Does anyone have any questions about our structure and the roles?
I have a question. If I heard you correctly, the Board...
Can you bring your mic?
Does this work? Is better?
Yes.
Okay. I heard you described the Board. Has there been any consideration for students or parents to serve on this Board? In the past, have there been, or?
I cannot speak to the past. I believe there may have been students who had participated on the Board in the past, only, and I say that only because I've seen documentation of that previously. But currently, the way it is written, our Board is limited to those 11 functioning members. That's not to say that the Board couldn't, through its bylaws, enable the participation and the voice of students, which we recognize is very important. I will acknowledge that at every single one of our Board meetings that I have been to, we have students present who give presentations about what they do, what they learn in our schools. They give us demonstrations, and they provide an excellent opportunity for our Board to constantly hear what they're doing and what is important to them. That is our process.
That's important to hear, that there's some engagement coming from the community of parents and students. My other question here is that the student achievement you mentioned, when are those, when are those assessed during the calendar year? Because I don't see, unless I missed that on the report.
So, in the law, there's no specific schedule that's given. Obviously, it's annually, but it may happen, in fact, more frequently than that, and the Board does have an opportunity to address that. Do you want to?
Sure. Thank you. Just to add briefly, the schools are also, still under the guidelines of state and federal statutes in terms of assessments and what the calendar year appears to be, what the requirements are under that. Those statutes don't directly impact the legislation around this piece. So, the current state and federal guidelines would still be in place for assessments for all students at CTEC.
Are there some questions? I have one. I don't understand the relationship between the Superintendent and the Executive Director. I'd like to explain that more. And I was thinking, CTEC's were going to be like, in the Hartford School District, Bridgeport School District, or any other school district where there is a Superintendent who is God and everybody working for him. So, what's like different?
We have always been very different, and I think even as a separate state agency, we will continue to be very different, largely because we are a state agency and because we have 21 locations throughout the state. It's very, it's a totally different creature than what most of our local and regional Boards of Education experience. So, our Superintendent reports to and is evaluated by our Executive Director. But the Superintendent, and it's very clear in the statute, retains a fair degree of authority and discretion in the education matters.
A lot of it is a check and balance within the agency. You may remember, a number of years ago, we had some problems, and this legislation came about, not everyone understood that. And I think, it makes sense, if you've got a check and balance in there, in terms with the Executive Director, especially related to fiscal matters, with the Superintendent. And the Board supervises both, or?
Well, Jill is an advisory board. That was also changed. It's not a governing board like this, so it's not more like a local board of education. So, again, it's not like a local board of education. No, it's not. It's an advisory board, primarily a link that, you know, looks at those things, as they talked about, the finances, we still look at those, what the industry people are saying. And, but primarily, it's a linkage to the business and industry in the state, as well as performing some governance matters, but primarily in the other, in the other directors. Or is advisory, not decision-making?
And I think the main issue, or the main thing here is being a state agency. That it is a state agency and will be governed by an Executive Director, as other state agencies have Executive Directors or Commissioners, as the Agency Heads.
The, and I appreciate all the work that the Commissioner's done on bringing this to fruition. It has been a long process, the one I think that will be very helpful to CTEC going forward. And the students, we diversified what we do in not only teaching high school students, but also doing a lot with adults at this point. We have 3,000 adults that are in the apprenticeship programs. Other questions? Comments?
So, the Board may find it helpful as well just to hear a brief overview of what the additional staffing requirements are in terms of this separation. And I won't draw on each detailed position, certainly, but just to give you an idea of what CTEC felt were the areas in need of additional staffing and emphasis. So, we do obviously require a new Executive Director, and his or her office will also require staff to enhance that function. In addition, we're making more ties for additional fiscal, affirmative action, ECO, and legal positions going forward. So, under the affirmative action positions, there are three positions currently in existence at the State Department of Education. All three positions do wonderful work for CTEC already, and so, we are in agreement with the State Department of Education that those three positions could come to CTEC and continue to serve the needs of CTEC. In addition to that, we have several fiscal department positions that we see as an additional need if we were to be effectively independent from the State Department of Education. Some of that will be acquired through transfers from CTEC's existing staff, either from building-based fiscal people who would then become central office, staff, or others. We have, in addition to that, requested new positions as well, at a cost of approximately $140,000. Those positions would support the areas of payroll, purchasing, payables, contrasting, grant writing, and more. I mentioned grant writing. Perhaps the grant writer is the most important position going forward under fiscal, because we recognize, as does the State Board of Education, the constant and ongoing need to enhance our human and other resource capital, and that grant writer would serve a huge and fundamental role in that area. Under the Office of Internal Audit, our internal audit, we currently benefit from three auditor positions that are existing at the State Department of Education, and we have been in contact with OPM, who has advised us, as has Kathy Dempsey and her sage wisdom, that these are positions that we would definitely need going forward. So, we've requested three positions as new positions under that Office of Internal Audit at an approximate cost of $194,000. Finally, I mentioned the Executive Director Office, that would be the, obviously, the Executive Director position, and two support staff positions at an anticipated cost of about $364,000. Attorney Scott will back me up, that the number of attorneys based fundamental uses of work that CTEC is involved in is growing on a daily basis, and so, we are requiring that an additional attorney, an additional secretary added to the current staffing at an approximate cost of $150,000. And finally, we are also in need of additional labor relations support. There's almost 2,000 staff members and tremendous numbers of administrators in the district. We are in constant negotiations. We are in never-ending cycles of negotiations, as well as other interrelational meetings and responsibilities that that Labor Relations Department takes on on a daily basis. So, we are requesting an additional secretarial position in that department for about $47,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point in terms of additional staffing. I did like to mention that Attachments D1, D2, and Attachment D, you will find a synopsis of the positions that I just mentioned that are being requested. And those, again, those positions, some of those positions will be obtained through the State Department of Education, and we thank the Commissioner and Kathy Dempsey for her stronggoing support in terms of forwarding those very valuable positions to us. In addition, some of them are the new positions, and the attachments that I mentioned illustrate both of those. Any questions I can answer?
So, I know the Board has the report, and so, in general, we can just take questions at this point unless there's any other key point that you'd like to share.
Absolutely.
I have a question. If the, with this staffing or request, and the legislative request has been made, would that prevent you from, prevent the transition from occurring? Or, I guess I'm asking, is this transition for sure, or is it dependent on factors that may change during the spring?
So, the transition is for sure at this point. The legislative proposal is intended to assist in making it more efficient and more clear about what the roles are of the individuals. Is it absolutely necessary? It's preferable, I would say, but we are set and ready to go on July 1st. That is, that is the state of the law right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, but without the budget requirement for an Executive Director, you can't really do this unless we've got to be able to hire somebody. So, there are some on the financial side, with a couple of exceptions. Most of the, the other things that are in there are kind of procedural, which need to be changed.
And certainly, the Department is not walking away. Just to be clear, I know, we've met, as they've mentioned with Kathy Dempsey, we've been having a lot of conversations back and forth. I am still very much engaged in what's going on in our, in our technical school. I know, you know, at the end of nights, having conversations about what's going on in our actual buildings and where we have, you know, plumbing issues that, you know, a school may not open, I mean, those kinds of things have passed off, and certainly, we're here to support the system to make sure it's strong and healthy in moving forward. And transition, you know, whatever transition point is still necessary, we'll make sure that those are all in place.
And the technical high schools continue to be public schools of the state of Connecticut, so they still fall under the general, they fall under the purview of the State Board of Education. They're just not being managed by the State Board of Education, but you're still regulating
Questions? Why did you choose this model of having both a Superintendent and an Executive Director? If you think of local school systems, the Superintendent sits alone at the top of the end, you know?
Frankly, it was, that came out of the whole discussion with the legislative group. The, and as the Commissioner said, this is an agency within the state government, so you needed, you need a Director of that, as opposed to making the Superintendent the Director of your, it's a, it's another, you have a fiscal person who's got the oversight, and then you have a content person in the, in the mix too, which is the Superintendent. There's a number of different issues. One is the, you want a Superintendent that will be able to be there for a while, and you can have a contract with a Superintendent, you can't have a contract with an Agency Head. There are, there's also the need for some check and balance in there. Even in a local school district, the budgets have to go to the, the budgets have got to go through, you know, through the town, the mayor gets involved, everybody else gets involved in the process. So, there are checks and balances there, as opposed to a state agency that's fairly small compared to the whole, all the different agencies in the state, this provides for some internal controls too.
You know, plus, I mean, you raise a good point, Alan, and I, and I kind of wondered that as I'm listening to the report, and then I'm thinking back. I think the rest all do it. Well, I know the largest one, Crick, has an Executive Director and a Superintendent, and an Assistant Superintendent, so, 26 schools, so, it's been done before. There is a model out there.
And I think, about Crick, my former, I remember when this first came up as a discussion years ago, you know, with the situation that happened with the former Superintendent. I think that Crick was mentioned, that this was a model that was there and that should be picked up. I understand why there, the Director would be necessary.
And I think this helps to address that.
Yeah.
Any further questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to the Commissioner and Eileen and Susan and Kathy and Laura and everybody else in this. It's been a team effort, not just a couple of people working on this. Laura's been working on this for years, and we really appreciate that effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might echo Mr. Treffey's comments and also the Commissioner's comments, we truly do continue to work together very closely on a number of important educational issues, some of which you heard this morning. And it is, it is truly a conception of mine that I've had this discussion with the Commissioner that although we intend to continue as agencies to work together and collaborate in the future, I will truly miss the opportunity of early morning and late evening chats that we continue to have. A variety of issues.
I bet they don't go away.
So I truly thank the board and Commissioner and Mr. Treffey and our CTEC board for all the support that's gone into this in the making, as well as our legal director, Attorney Scott, has put in a tremendous number of hours in working through this. Kathy, we couldn't have done it without you as well. So again, I consider thanks to everyone here for your support and for allowing us to report to you this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So are we going to go into executive session?
I'm trying to go into, to set my notes. How long will the executive session be? You know, we have an idea or?
Do we have a sense of the length of executive session?
If you find it, maybe?
No.
I didn't expect it to be that long. You know, 45?
45. Ready to see it now?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Have a motion for executive session? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? We will go into executive session, and from there, we will go through our lunch recess.
Alan, did you make that last?
We will go now, go now into executive session, and when that concludes, we will have our recess for lunch.
Need a motion?
In a minute. Do we need a motion to come back to session? Okay.
What are you, what are you moving?
To come out of the executive board.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Report? All right, thank you. Great to see everyone. You had my report, which was shorter than usual because it was only two weeks ago that we were together. But just a couple of things I want to highlight for you. You've heard today again about the staffing shortages, and we continue, our talent office continue to work with our districts. We have a rapid response team here in the agency of staff, who when issues are brought to our attention, they reach out to the districts, they collaborate internally to provide support. So that is ongoing. Another issue that we'll continue to monitor is staffing within the agency. Folks are, we have an agent workforce, and folks are taking advantage of their ability to retire. Congratulations to them. Of us who are, remain, we're looking at, continuing to look at our capacity to maintain our key functions and really working on, you know, also thinking about knowledge transfer as we lose folks who've been here for quite some time. So we continue to keep a close eye on that. Under ongoing activities, and I know you were here from Dr. DeBoer Watson about the Remote Learning Commission, and I wanted you to be aware that we're in the throes, as required by our Public Act 21-2 of the last session, that the department is required to develop standards for remote learning, and we're in the process of doing that. The purpose of these standards is to guide the design of remote learning environments for learners in grade 9 through 12, as required in legislation that districts can start offering remote learning opportunities to students at grade 9 through 12 in the upcoming year, based on standards that are developed. And so the first part of these standards is to get to the Remote Learning Commission and get feedback. Now they're widely out, getting stakeholder feedback. And Laura, could you just make sure, I know, again, that you'll hear more about it, but that the board is provided with preliminary draft standards as well, so they can see what's there and also provide feedback. The other thing that we did since we met two weeks ago is to reconvene our Accelerate CTEC task force that we convened back in the spring of 2021 to develop, they were convened to develop statewide education recovery and acceleration framework and programming that we could really look to as we really emerge out of the pandemic, and also to provide feedback on enrichment opportunities that we were planning for the enrichment program for last summer. And you'll hear more about that in one of our reports out today. The task force is comprised of a cross-section of stakeholders. We have awesome folks in that space, and they met and really developed the Accelerate CTEC framework that I shared with you a couple of months ago that really got a nice call out in some national publications. So we, I brought the group back together. The group is organized around our priorities that you've heard us talk about, including summer enrichment. They were able to hear where we are with all the efforts that we're doing here, and we solicited feedback from them as well, continuous improvement, working on that. So that was something that was awesome to do. And finally, you see in my report that we have initiated an MOU with Department of Administrative Services, their SMART unit, which is their small, let's see, it's the unit that does about 716 or 17 agencies for recruitment, and Mr. Treffey understands, and some folks would know, kind of before the HR integration efforts, that our centralization efforts that occur, that our HR here in the agency was responsible for all recruitment of CTEC, all recruitment of our central office staff, all recruitment of Office of Early Childhood, and also, one point, the Office of Higher Education. So there is a lot that we had a small staff that we're working on. So thanks to the DAS centralization, we're now able to get a dedicated group of folks to work directly with us on recruitment and also on our affirmative action equal improvement opportunity efforts. And so we have an MOU now in place to do that, and CTEC will continue to be taken care of, but we only have to use the same group of folks to try to do all of this together. So just keeping you up to date as to where we are, in addition to all the external challenges that we work through on a daily basis, it's critically important that we are certainly addressing the internal operatives here, the systems that make sure that we can continue to be effective and efficient in our operations. Finally, I just want to share with you, the students that testified here this morning, we will follow up, so we can find out what's going on there. And, and also, we're sending out information to superintendents later this afternoon, just giving everyone up to date around masking, that is such, you know, the issue of the day. But just so you're aware, that Governor Lamont has asked the General Assembly to extend the number of executive orders in order to classify some of them into law as needed. So where we are right now is really awaiting the legislative, the legislative action on those executive orders, and at the same time, that we're prepared around masking, that if, for, for some reason, there is local decision-making that's required, that we will work with EPH to ensure that as we've done throughout the pandemic, appropriate guidance for our mitigation strategies and what to do is really provided to our districts in this case. As you've heard, it's a complex issue, and it is, you know, we, we have a lot of conversations about making sure that our schools are safe places for our students to learn in person and safe places for educators to also work in person as well. So how we continue to have those expectations and work towards that end. With that, that's my report. We'll answer any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions?
On the, on the community roundtable on family and community engagement, what, what type of conversation is this coming?
Thank you very much for asking. I skipped over that one, but as we, four years, three years ago formed the community, the Roundtable for Parent Engagement Engagement in Education, and we now have a rhythm of meeting with this group of great stakeholders. This last meeting was updating them on emerging issues in education, so we were able to provide update on where we are about social-emotional learning. That's a conversation was also another conversation, I'm trying to think, I'm looking at the folks Dempsey, is a part of those meetings together, and we just look across the agency to make sure that as stakeholders, they understand the things we're doing, and they're providing feedback. So really, it's a two-way conversation, us hearing from them, them hearing from us, and that they can further inform all the work that we're, that we're doing here. They also got updated on the Zach and Matina studies curriculum was another part of the conversation. Dempsey, what am I missing?
I think those were the three. They just covered it.
Those were the three major areas that we, that we shared with them, and you're always invited to attend. So we'll just make sure that you are in the loop when those meetings are occurring. There's great spaces here from our parent advocates, and also, we added some students, so students are in that room as well, that have asked questions and provided feedback.
Are these are virtuals?
Yes. We used to meet in person before the pandemic, and now we're having virtual meetings.
And I appreciate hearing from you that you're going to follow up with the students. That is the last one. Thank you.
Thank you. Just in the, on the safe, you're creating a safe space for students and, and, you know, really trying to take in some of the messages that we're hearing from, from students and parents, that as we're talking about safety, you know, we're talking about health, that we're also trying to communicate and, you know, to the extent that, I guess it's a question, to the extent of, to which, are we communicating with superintendents about not creating hostile environments either, right, within the schools, as we're trying to keep students safe and focused on learning?
It truly is a part of the social-emotional wellbeing of our students and our staff in that space as well. Really complex issue, as you can well imagine, and it's one of the reasons we've continued to have our health and safety efforts, where we can share information that they can go back and share locally, and to, to support everyone involved in, in our systems. And, and also to make sure that our families develop confidence in, in having their students be in that space and feel comfortable during the course of the day as well. So really, the entire community really engaged in this, but the point of making sure that we're appropriately addressing the issues of being safe in schools with our students is really important part of the, the process.
I have a question also. John, what's, how much collaboration do you have with other states in terms of the public, the public health and COVID situation as it evolves, and we're going into year two, and experiences of other states and districts?
Sure. So our organization, CCSSO, is the state organization for commissioners, and they're constantly, so weekly, they convene all our commissioners, so we get a chance to hear about what's happening across the country around this issue, and really able to, almost problem solve and learn from each other. So we do, that happens on a weekly basis, and also weekly, I meet with commissioners from Massachusetts, Maine, Vermont, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, and we get a chance to talk to each other, right, to our neighbors, to really strategize, share our guidance documents with each other, and to learn what, what we're all doing together. And so it's, it's really a great experience, and we're on each other's cell phones calling as issues are arising, and actually, it's a great place to support, of support for all of us understanding really what it's taken to lead effectively during this time. Thank you for asking.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. So that takes us up to the report of the chair. I sent this on the.
Okay, you're going to confirm, okay, no financial matters, right?
There's no financial matters.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve this agenda?
No.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. Commissioner, I guess we're up to the five-year plan.
Five-year plan?
Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see you after lunch. I'm Keith Norton, I'm the Chief Strategic Planning Officer for the agency. I was here two weeks ago to give you a, sort of a 10,000-foot overview of the planning process in preparation for the development of your five-year plan. And if you recall, I had mentioned that we were in the process of contracting with Ed Advance, who will lead this effort on our behalf, and in particular.
Can you pull it a bit closer, maybe?
Oh, sure. And in particular, we have with us today from Ed Advance, Jonathan Costa. Jonathan is familiar to many of you here from various capacities, not the least of which is his assistance in putting together your last five-year plan. So I will now hand it over to Jonathan, who will give a presentation in a bit more detail into what will be happening over the next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Good afternoon, everyone. I appreciate your time today. My purpose here is simply to give you a sense of what our process is going to be and what you can expect from it. I have a presentation loaded?
It's coming.
It's coming. Excellent presentation. I know a couple of you around the table were present last time. I know Mr. Taylor was, and the focus of it really is trying to help you gather the information you need to prioritize what you try to accomplish over the next five years. And as I think you'll see in a moment, I promise that I will not endanger you with PowerPoint poisoning, it's going to be quick. There you go. Thank you. You can go right on to the next slide. That's me. I have, as I, as Keith said, I had the opportunity to help you the last time you went through this process, and I do so with the support of my colleagues from the RES Alliance, because we have a statewide reach, we will be doing data collection on your behalf across the state, and we'll be depending on my colleagues at my, at the other RES to, to help do that. I have been doing planning in the state of Connecticut at the district level since 1991, and have done about 150 plans over that time, not only in Connecticut, but in New York, Massachusetts, and in other areas as well. So we have some experience at this. Go ahead. And really, the, the biggest of the big picture is that we are here to help you as, as a board and as a department, focus on the essential question of what is it that you need to do to promote equity and excellence through your policies and actions, so that every student in Connecticut is fully prepared for life, learning, and work beyond school? That's sort of our, our primary mission and focus. Okay, next slide? I just, you can hit it twice. I just wanted you to just take a second. When I do these projects, I have really two organizing principles that I try to adhere to for the sake of practicality and getting to the heart of the matter as quickly as possible, and that is, I firmly believe
that public health and COVID situation as it evolves and we're going into year two? And experiences of other states and districts?
Sure. So our organization CCSSO is the state organization for commissioners. And they're constantly said weekly, they convene all our commissioners. So we get a chance to hear about what's happening across the country around this issue and really able to almost probably tell the learn from each other. So we do that happens on a weekly basis and also weekly. I meet with commissioners from Massachusetts, Maine, Vermont, New Hampshire, Rhode Island. And we get a chance to talk to each other, right, to our neighbors, to really strategize, share our guidance documents with each other and to learn what what we're all doing together. And so it's it's really a great experience and we're on each other's cell phones calling as issues are arriving. And actually, it's a great place to support of support for all of us understanding really what it's taken to lead effectively during this time. Thank you for asking.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. So that takes us up to the report of the chair. Tentative on that.
Okay, you're going to confirm, okay, no financial matters, right?
There's no financial matters.
Okay. Have an emotional proof and send agenda.
No, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Commissioner, I guess we're up to the five year plan.
Five year plan.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see you after lunch. I'm Keith Norton. I'm the Chief Strategic Planning Officer for the agency. I was here two weeks ago to give you a sort of a 10,000 foot overview of the planning process in preparation for the development of your five year plan. And if you recall, I had mentioned that we were in the process of contracting with Ed Advance, who will lead this effort on our behalf.
Can you pull it a bit closer maybe?
Oh, sure. And in particular, we have with us today from Ed Advance Jonathan Costa. Jonathan is familiar to many of you here from various capacities, not the least of which is his assistance in putting together your last five year plan. So I will now hand it over to Jonathan, who will give a presentation in a bit more detail into what will be happening over the next year.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. Good afternoon, everyone. I appreciate your time today. My purpose here is simply to give you a sense of what our process is going to be and what you can expect from it. I have a presentation loaded. It's coming. I know a couple of you around the table were present last time. I know Mr. Taylor was. And the focus of it really is trying to help you gather the information you need to prioritize what you try to accomplish over the next five years. And as I think you'll see in a moment. I promise that I will not endanger you with PowerPoint poisoning. It's going to be quick. There you go. Thank you. You can go right on to the next slide. That's me. I have, as I, as Keith said, I had the opportunity to help you the last time you went through this process. And I do so with the support of my colleagues from the RESC Alliance. Because we have a statewide reach, we will be doing data collection on your behalf across the state and will be depending on my colleagues at my at the other RES to to help do that. I have been doing planning in the state of Connecticut at the district level since 1991 and have done about 150 plans over that time, not only in Connecticut, but in New York, Massachusetts, and in other areas as well. So we have some experience at this. Go ahead. And really, the the biggest of the big picture is that we are here to help you as a as a board and as a department. Focus on the essential question of what is it that you need to do to promote equity and excellence through your policies and actions so that every student in Connecticut is fully prepared for life, learning, and work beyond school? That's sort of our our primary mission and focus. Okay, next slide. I just, you can hit it twice. I just wanted you to just take a second. When I do these projects, I have really two organizing principles that I try to adhere to for the sake of practicality and getting to the heart of the matter as quickly as possible. And that is, I firmly believe that the purpose of planning is to uncover those really critical, high leverage outcomes that you really have to focus on and to do it in a way that's consistent with a systems orientation, thinking about how work gets done. Simply admonishing folks to try to do something without giving them a pathway to do it is a strategy for frustration. So how can we help the board identify the most critical root causes in terms of approaching equity and excellence? And how can we help you think about the ways in which this work can be done most effectively to reach as many students as possible? Thank you. And really, the framework of your previous plan was such that it focused on three critical areas, which I don't think have changed in importance. What has changed is the context in which you're pursuing them. So it would be my advice to you to really build on the success and the work that's been done by Charlene and the staff to pursue your previous plan, but to think about what you need to start, stop, or continue to do to achieve those goals. Go ahead. And to to recall them, those were the three priorities from the last five year plan. High expectations for every student, great teachers and leaders, and great schools. And it's hard to argue with those three outcomes. But as you can imagine, as you lived every day, a lot of the context around how you pursue them, a lot has changed in the last six years. Okay? So our goal is to help you pull from these three pools of information to make the best decision that you can related to what is in your next five year plan. So, you know, what are the near term and future expectations that this board has for the Connecticut context? What are your constituents telling you about what they think are the most important pathways you need to pursue for equity and excellence? And what are the existing department and board priorities? And I think it's a weaving of those three things together that will that will really support your work in in determining the next five year plan. Okay? And when we're done, we hope that you'll have a blueprint for those most critical pathways forward for improving Connecticut's public ed. Okay? And here's our process as we have it today. And we are in the obviously in the preparation stage currently, working on setting up the structure and the processes we'll use for data collection. And once we meet with you, I believe we're hoping to meet with you in the summer in June to really determine your most critical data collection focus areas. We will determine those in that retreat. We will then go out and across the state, conduct focus groups and data collection on your inquiry questions and come back to you with a report on what we found. And based on that information and your own input, you'll have a chance to decide what are the biggest priorities that you have for your next five year plan. Much of the infrastructure we created to go out and do that data collection, and I think there are almost 40 organizations that we use to help distribute and disseminate information about the questions that we were seeking to collect data on, all those still exist and will obviously update them and ask you what your priorities are in that area as well. But the big difference this time around is we have a new platform to help collect information that doesn't require people to be in person. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the platform called Thought Exchange. It allows us to ask open ended questions and literally have anyone with access to an electronic device on the internet respond and give us feedback. At the beginning of the pandemic, we did a thought exchange working with Commissioner, then Commissioner Cardona about parent concerns at the start of the pandemic. And that thought exchange remains to this day the largest exchange in that company's history. Yet over 56,000 Connecticut residents respond to that call for questions. They rated over a million different items in that exchange. So we have a good history with the use of Thought Exchange in in Connecticut. And we are going to employ that platform in addition to the in person focus groups to expand our reach to help get you the feedback you need to to have a successful plan. And once we gather and analyze all that and report to you and you process it and tell us what you're thinking in terms of where you'd like to go, we will draft a a framework, work with Charlene and her staff to to form that plan, and then bring it back to you to for your approval and feedback and eventual distribution across the state. Thank you. I already previewed some of the tools we're going to use, obviously working with you, in person meetings, focus groups, thought exchange, and priority based decision making tools for you as you determine what your priorities are. Okay?
Questions? Is is Thought Exchange something we can go to our terminals and take a look at just out of curiosity?
Excuse me, Alan, sorry.
I'm wondering if that's just something we we can go to our computers and take a look at.
I did, I'd be glad to create a practice exchange for the board, just give you, I could do a a practice board exchange that you could work on as a as a community. I know I've worked with Ajit to do a couple of direct student exchanges in addition to the one we did with the former Commissioner Cardona. So there's good facility with it around the department. I'd be glad to create a a test exchange, if you will, on a board issue that you would like to do internally, just so you can get a feel for what it's like. Essentially, you ask one open ended question. People go in and they can submit as many responses as they want. And then they get put in a queue to rate responses. So they rate a response from one to five based on how it strikes them. And what happens is you really get a true sense of where the greatest pool of agreement on priority responses are. It does an excellent job of sifting out the extreme on either end. Because extreme responses simply don't get enough support to rise to the top of the of the pile. And it's a very sophisticated algorithm. You get a chance to look behind the scenes at those thoughts that are particularly divisive, right, at very high ratings in one group and very low ratings in another, and which ones are truly consensus based priorities that you can trust as being representative of the constituent group that you're asking.
And then does it? Thoughtexchange.com, I'd just like to take a look at it.
Exactly. Go to Thoughtexchange.com. And they're a really unique company. They're a totally virtual company. They do not have its physical headquarters. They have a couple of small locations, but their employees are spread all throughout Canada. And I've worked with them for about five years. And it's a truly unique tool and a wonderful way to gather feedback. We're using it for superintendent searches, for internal management issues, simply because it allows you to reach a large number of people, get their reaction, and understand what people are thinking when you need them to express it.
Sounds fascinating. Thank you.
Your plan gives us to a a report when? You're scheduling a virtual plan, I should say, when?
About a year from now, I think, Charlene, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions?
That's a good question. I was going to ask that. Thank you for asking. Is is the tool friendly?
Excuse me?
The tool, is is?
Thought Exchange?
Yes. Is it friendly and and effective for our especially for our low income first generation population? So we don't want it to be too complicated.
Absolutely. It is very straightforward in terms of its use. One question, type your responses, go and rate the responses of others. It is multilingual, so it can be done in in a number of different languages. And I want to stress that it is a tool we are going to use. It's not the only tool we are going to use. We are still going to do the in person focus groups. People who want to come and express their opinion in person will still be able to. We'll probably do a survey as well. This is just another way to gather feedback. And I don't want to leave the impression that that Thought Exchange is the only way we're going to do it, but it's a new way we have added to the other data collection tools that we've used in the past to help gather information on constituent feedback.
Any other questions, I come in? I think we all look forward to participating. Thank you.
Excellent.
So Chair, before they get started, I'm going to have to run out for for Paul. But I'm just so excited about what you're about to hear, which is a Connecticut innovation. As you've heard him talk about, making sure that we are evaluating everything that we're invested in to make sure we understand what works. So you're getting a preview of the work that we're doing and where we're going to go with it. So really excited about that presentation. And Desi will be the driver of our agency updates. I don't think you're back in time for that, but really excited about we really getting the flavor of the work that's been done in the agency where we are and what folks are really highlighting and calling out as the best practice and as they lead it in this effort. So with that, Ajit?
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, Chairman Taylor, Vice Chair Benham, and Board. Here to give you an update on two things. One is the Connecticut COVID-19 Education Research Collaborative, a new collaborative that we've set up. We'll discuss what that is, how it works, and then we'll share the findings from our first evaluation that was conducted under the offices of CCERC, which is the Evaluation of the Summer Enrichment 2021 Program. I'm joined here by Professor Dr. Morgan Donaldson from the University of Connecticut, who is my co lead of the CERC. Thank you, Dr. Donaldson, for for stepping up. And I'll turn it over to you in a moment. So what is the CERC? As the Commissioner mentioned, we were interested in having a system for evaluating the effects of the wealth of investments we're maintaining as a result of our recovery from this pandemic. At the same time, there was some federal efforts spurred around this area as well. So we kind of coupled a bunch of those streams of efforts and we created this this new entity. It's really a collaboration of public and private universities across Connecticut. And those logos you see there, those are the the various institutions that are part of the CERC. And what is the purpose? It's really to conduct evaluation studies of COVID-19 related projects that we're funding or to conduct other research studies that are important as a result of this pandemic. And there are many, many topics that are emerging. But I just wanted to say that part of this effort has been about setting up a collaborative that evaluates projects and helps us know what's working. But part of this work is also about building that collaboration across those prior institutions and building our own speed capacity across institutions to conduct these types of evaluations. Because not all institutions shown there are equally equipped to support this type of evaluative work. So part of our commitment to the CERC is to yes, conduct all the evaluations that we're interested in, but to also truly build that capacity that sets us up for the long term. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Dr. Donaldson to walk us through how the CERC is set up. Dr. Donaldson is from the University of Connecticut. UConn is the fiduciary, the fiscal agent, the coordinator of this effort. But there, but it is by no means just a UConn project. As you see, it truly is a collaborative across these different institutions. But UConn is kind of the fiduciary and the coordinator. But I'll turn it over to Dr. Donaldson to describe the CERC a little further.
Thanks so much, Ajit. And thank you, the board, for inviting us here to talk about this really innovative partnership. I want to emphasize that it's a collaborative with CFE and these universities and colleges, which is really breaking new ground and producing research that makes an immediate impact on Connecticut schools and children. Next slide, please. So how is CERC organized? CFE is really driving this partnership by setting the agenda, by identifying projects, identifying questions that need to be answered, and providing the funding. As Ajit said, UConn serves as the fiduciary. The co leads are the two of us. And then our steering committee is deliberately drawing from a number of different universities, including UConn, but also the University of Hartford, Southern, Western, Yale University. So we're really trying to draw from different types of universities from across the state, different perspectives. Each of us on the steering committee has a different area of expertise so that we weigh in on different factors that come across our desk. Every time we can constitute a team to do a research project, we try to bring in different PI, from a range of Connecticut higher education institutions, and make those teams cross institutional. Next slide, please.
PI is principal and.
Principal investigator, exactly, yes. So what is the process for getting a proposal started and constituting a team? First, the study topic is established by the CFE. Ajit and I collaborate to create a call for proposals. Then we distribute that call, researchers express interest based on their expertise and their time. Then the steering committee puts together a a team based on research of expressed interest. Then the team gets together and submits a proposal. We review it. And then once modifications are made, we approve it and the study begins. And I think another piece of the innovation is that we're really trying to do research on pressing problems in Connecticut schools, districts, and classrooms. And we're trying to turn around that research in a timely manner. And too much research is done sort of in a very leisurely pace. And when the results come out, it's it's more often than it should be, too late. So we're trying to speed up the process and do really high quality research in time to really affect teaching and learning and services in Connecticut schools. Next slide, please. So the current project we have going, the first one is an evaluation of the summer enrichment programming from last summer. We have two researchers, Dr. Rupia and Don Stopoulos from the University of Connecticut and Dr. Daisy Kong, also from UConn, who completed that evaluation and and will be sharing some funding on that with you today. We have a remote learning audit that's really taking a close look at remote learning over the last two years, looking at student performance, looking at the lived experiences of students and families. And so that's underway, led by Dr. Michael Scrambler from Yale with Dr. Delman and Todd from UConn. And then we have a third RFC that's in the process of putting together a team on the learner engagement and attendance program on both the states. The next slide.
So before we move into the summer enrichment evaluation, are there any questions about the CERC itself? You saw the steering committee, but that's just the seven people who are sort of working together to pick the research team. The number of professors who are on the mailing list is, I don't know, over 50 or?
Like 60, so.
Yeah. So more and more faculty are signing on. So just know that when people submit proposals, they come from the broader community. The steering committee is just like an advisory for us to help guide through the process. So any questions on the structure itself?
What what disciplines are represented? Are the the faculty coming in from the education ones or is it bringing in?
It's really broad. So we have on the larger PA, so on the steering committee, I would say we have psychologists. uh, we have economists, we have statisticians, um, and, and in the broader, in the broader CCRC, we have people from economics departments, sociology departments, psychology departments. We have people from, um, education schools. So it really anthropology, um, I think we have historians. Um, so we really, it is cross-cutting and interdisciplinary.
Very exciting, thank you.
And that's a good question. Martha, you can speak into your mic, please.
Oh, no, yes.
You seem to be checking my thoughts today, but I'm trying to enhance what you just asked. Um, how do you promote, how did you promote in terms of these institutions? Cause they were all institutions of four-year beyond and no community colleges. Um, Kirsten, what was your strategic plan for them?
So we, we started out with Accelerate CT and the partners within that organization and distributing the call there. Uh, we held our first meeting in late May 2021, uh, but we're continuing to get the word out. So, uh, it's not a closed door by any means and we're continuing to recruit. Um, so that's, uh, we'll, we'll, we can target community colleges in particular. I think that's a great suggestion.
This, I have to say, strikes me as just an extraordinary development to get all of these competitors working cooperatively. And it's really wonderful and it may be early to ask this question, but I'm wondering if there's, you know, any discussion about, when God willing, we can eliminate the second C there, um, keeping it going. Because in a small state like this, to, you know, coordinate the research that goes on instead of having all the researchers competing with each other for, for dollars of attention is just seems like an extraordinarily efficient and useful thing to do.
Couldn't agree more. And frankly, that discussion has come up. If you drop that second C, we're left with CERC and I think that acronym might be taken. So, but when I speak about this, I, I don't say, I mean, some people say CERC. I, I tend to say the research collaborative, the education research collaborative. At least that's how I, you know, that's how, that's what it is. And there have been other topics that have come up, uh, and partly, uh, I can't run afoul of CFE and the rules around funding. So I just need to make sure that as we branch into other areas, uh, you know, those discussions have come up basically. And we want to make sure that what funding is currently supporting this will continue to be permissible for use with, when we expand to other areas. And there have other areas that have definitely come up. Some of them were by the pandemic, but not necessarily to, um, recover from the pandemic. One example would be dual enrollment courses. You know, we were very interested in expanding student participation and dual enrollment. Um, it's something we, you know, there are signs of urgency upon due to the pandemic, but it's not necessarily a pandemic-only issue, but something we definitely want to expand into. So yes, I think there's been talk of dropping that second C.
Excellent.
We'll get there, I think.
Sorry, I didn't mean to disrange your flow.
You know, any other questions on this before we just briefly recap the summer enrichment efforts? Okay, uh, so the summer enrichment 2021 project was kind of stood up very quickly last summer, as you may remember. Um, federal American Rescue Plan funds, um, the governor dedicated, uh, up to $11 million for this project. We didn't use all of it, but, um, but a, a application process was set up. Uh, as kids were coming back, students were coming back from three months of remote learning and then, uh, you know, wanting to reengage students prior to the start of the 21 school year. That's where the thinking for this, this program came from. Uh, we had over 200, um, expansion grants and innovation grants. Pure innovation grants, innovation were more expensive grant awards. So, uh, the evaluation, and this was the first evaluation, you know, at the same time, we were standing up this research collaborative as well. So, um, this was the first thing on the racket, if you will. And, um, we were glad that UConn stepped up to do the first, uh, to set up the CERC but also conduct the first evaluation. So we're actually going to turn it back to Dr. Donaldson to review the, the findings from this evaluation. Uh, Dr. Kau and Dr. Sutcliffe couldn't be here, but, um, but, uh, Dr. Donaldson will share the findings.
Thank you. So next slide, please. So, uh, it's important to note just at the outset, um, these summer enrichment programs were really focused on giving, uh, students, children, uh, a positive, fun summer to try to get them ready to reengage with schooling in the fall. Um, so the, the goal in some, in some ways was fun. Um, so Dr. Kau and Don Stopoulos conducted a mixed methods evaluation. I'm looking at the 210 convention grants, small grants, and then the 25 innovation grants, which are quite a bit larger. Um, they conducted about 200 surveys of the site supervisors, over a thousand surveys of students, and 10 site visits where they did 42 staff and 62 student interviews in focus groups. And they also observed activities. Overall, these summer enrichment programs really engaged a lot of students. So, um, over 38,000 students, um, took part in the expansion sites and, uh, over 69,000 in innovation sites. Um, the average program, medium program, enrolled 95 students. Uh, and these programs were, uh, enrolled above, um, the planned enrollment. So they really were a big draw for students across the state last summer. Um, and, and 56% were on a scholarship or fee waiver. Next. Here you can see, um, the growth. So this is, uh, shows you the enrollment, the data for programs on which the, the researchers had two years of data. So the blue shows you the enrollment for 2020 and the orange is the enrollment for 2021. And you can see that enrollment in these camps just about doubled, um, based, and, and that was in due, due in large part to this infusion of funds, um, from, from the governor's, uh, commitment. The median camp enrollment was increased from 54 to 124 from 2020 to 2021. Next slide, please. So overall, um, the researchers found that the grants allowed for the creation of new activities and extending them to more students. So camps were quite diverse by theme. So they ranged from STEM to sports-focused, to art-focused, uh, and they had a range of different activities. Overall, the student reports about their experience in the camps were quite positive. So 72% reported having a lot of fun in their camp and 22% had some fun. Um, 70% wanted to return next summer, uh, 26% said they might attend, and just 4% said they wouldn't. Um, and a big part of that was the relationships as plants, the relationships between the kids and the staff at these camps. So 69% enjoyed the counselors, teachers, adults at the camp a lot, um, and 20% enjoyed them somewhat. So one of the aspects of the theory of action was to, um, to really give children an opportunity to develop some, some really solid and supportive relationships with adults at the camp. Another part of the theory of action was to facilitate positive peer interaction. Um, now this one is a little less, um, positive, but I think there's some reason, some clear reason for that. So about a quarter says the camp definitely made them feel more excited to go back to school. 32% probably felt excited, 20% probably weren't. And then 21% said, we're definitely not excited to go back to school. We're not sure this is, this is due to any camp values. Crap the ancient of us, going to school. Next slide. Here are some quotes from the focus groups and interviews. Um, so you could see, uh, high school students from an arts-based camp talked about their experiences, uh, with social emotional wellbeing at, at the camp. We had open discussions about things that bother us. Um, from a staff member, students were more open with friendships, more excited to spend time with different peers and form normalizing friendships with each other. So this really fit in well with the theory of action, um, behind the camp, behind the, um, enrichment program. In terms of preparing students to return to school, um, one elementary student said that waking up early and going eight to three at camp really prepared them to go back to school. Whereas a high school student, um, said, if anything, camp made me less excited about it. This is an environment that I like to learn in and I know my school is just not that. So, uh, there may be some things that K-12 schools could learn from these really exciting and engaging camps. Um, in terms of other findings, staff reported the use of funds to support student engagement. So an innovation grant, um, funded program, 100% of these programs used the funds to develop new activities that they wouldn't otherwise have had. Um, 96% used the funds to purchase additional materials. 88% used the funds to hire more staff to expand services and enrollment. And then 67% used it, uh, to fund staff training. In terms of the expansion grants, which is again with the smaller, smaller programs and smaller grants, uh, 71%, um, used the funds to develop new activities, 73% to purchase additional materials, uh, and 76% to hire more staff. The main challenges, um, there were challenges around maintaining student-peer relations, um, which, um, which were not entirely unexpected. And then the quick turnaround, as Ajit referred to this, from the time the, the grants was, uh, the grants were announced, the programs were decided, determined, the standing up, it was quite a quick turnaround. So that was another big challenge for these programs. Next slide.
And I'll close by saying that, uh, we are working, uh, much more aggressively to stand up a summer enrichment 2022, uh, offering, um, at about a similar scale. Um, but a few things that we're taking away from the evaluation would be, given that we're doing the work now, we hope to get out with the application in a much more timely fashion so that providers have a chance to plan and, and implement their programs. Um, the other thing is the reference to, uh, that Dr. Donaldson mentioned, the partnership with the schools, is to see if we can be more intentional about what that looks like so that there is greater connection between what, you know, stu, the camp experiences and back to school to help carry forward lessons and ease the transition. And the third suggestion that we also had at our Accelerate CT meeting, I think it was last week, um, was, you know, one of the things we were not able to do in this short timeframe is have any student-level data about who are the students attending the camps. We don't know that, you know, we have survey and observations. But for this coming cycle, we're not 100% sure if we're going to be able to pull this off, but one of the things we're looking at is to see if we can get some student-level marker even, you know, even if we got the student status, for example. Like, you know, we would then be able to say, okay, who are the students who are attending the camp? And then we would, the evaluation could be even more rigorous to gauge effect and impact of camp experiences on future student engagement. So those are some of the things we're looking at.
So that, that I think answers the question that was in front of my mind, which is, do we know whether this summer experience made a difference for how the kids do, starting in, in school? And I think we're not going to be able to figure that out this year, but maybe for next year.
Yes.
Sounds wonderful. Any other comments or questions?
Would the, uh, would the, you know, the locations, were the students kind of geographically funded? Or was it just, it just covered the urban as well as rural areas? Yeah, I think it was quite, um, diverse. It was open and it did address, um, you know, if you look at the list of awardees, it did address the wide spectrum. Uh, I think this go-around for '22, we're trying to see if we can be even more intentional. Again, sorry to use that word again, but in terms of targeting it more in areas of greater need. Uh, that is under consideration.
That'd be great, thank you. Glad you're doing that. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a comment. I think this is just wonderful and it's, um, it will only help with the summer slide situation that we see. And I hope it's something that goes on, continues and goes on and on way past this particular time. But, uh, thank you for the work. It's just, it's phenomenal and it's, uh, what a great opportunity for our students.
Anybody else? I think we all agree with that.
It's also, I mean, it's also very cost-effective if I'm following, you know, it sounds like you, you spent 11 million or shy of that to serve over 100,000 students?
Yeah, we actually didn't spend 11 million. I think it was more in the neighborhood of 8.6 million. I forgot mine.
Even better. My, my calculations, it was like a hundred dollars a kid.
Yeah, but obviously the intensity of the camps vary, uh, but yeah, I think it was, it is a definitely from that, a simple math standpoint, definitely cost-effective to give kids that experience during the summer.
Yeah. Fabulous.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
We'll transition into our agency updates, Matt, if you could queue up the PowerPoint. We have a, a few updates, uh, for the board, starting off with our federal funding update. And, uh, our chief financial officer, Kathy, does she will kick us off?
Uh, good afternoon, board members. Uh, thank you, Desi. One quick aside to, to the summer programming, um, many of the districts utilized portions of their federal funding to also expand their summer programming, um, both academic enrichment and just enrichment programs. So the cohort of kids that you don't see there, many of them were also served, um, by their local school districts. So I think that the number of students that had opportunities was significantly larger than ever before this past summer. It was good news.
Yeah.
Um, just a quick overview, and we've talked about this briefly. Uh, Connecticut received 1.7 billion dollars in, um, total ESSER funds. And that was across, uh, there were three rounds of federal COVID funding for education. ESSER I, as we have abbreviated them, ESSER II, and ARP-ESSER. ARP-ESSER, which was the American Rescue Plan Act, which was the most recent one passed, was by far the largest fund, source of funding for the state. We received about 1.1 billion dollars. But of the 1.7 billion we received, um, under the three funding tranches, 90% of those funds are going directly to the LAAs. Um, there isn't, as I think we've discussed with the commissioner, um, when the commissioner was here in the, uh, a past meeting, that there is an application process. They're aligned to, the applications are aligned to state-level priorities. Um, and they also are aligned to the local school district's ESSER plan. So we have some, as we move forward, we're going to have some, um, a good ability to tell how the funds were used and what types of outcomes. And some of the work that Ajit will be doing will be taking a look with CCECR. I think I got that right. We'll be looking at districts that have made particularly significant investments in certain types of activities to see what the outcomes are there. And can we do the next slide? So ESSER I, which the funding was made available to the state in March of 2020. We call it our survive money. It was an award of 111 million dollars. That funding came to the state while the schools, while everybody was at home, um, when the pandemic had shut everything down. So the bulk of those funds have been, or were spent on activities designed to connect students to school for those remaining couple of months of school. And then over the summer and, or into that next fall, prepare the schools to bring the students back into the school. Uh, so the bulk of these funds, and it's a little bit, I looked this morning just to see, cause on a monthly basis, the districts draw down because on a monthly basis, the districts draw down the funds. And since we just changed the calendar month, I checked. So we are now under, ESSER I, we have now drawn down just about $84 million of the $99 million that went to the district. So they've spent just about 84%, which is right on track. These funds are required, they are required to spend all of them by 9/30 of 2022. So we are heading into the last nine months of use for these funds. But thankfully, we are on target. Next slide. So ESSER II funding, which we affectionately named our Thrive, was awarded to the state in December of 2020. It was an award of $492.4 million. Again, 90% of those funds go directly to the LEAs. 10% of the funds remained at the state level for statewide activities. We are currently, the updated figures for that is $118 million, or 27% of those funds have been drawn down on, which again, they're available all the way through September 30th, 2023. So the bulk of these funds are supporting activities around social-emotional, supporting students' social-emotional needs. They are for, districts have used them for hiring substitutes, for premium pay for teachers, for extended day. A lot of the funding has actually gone into staffing, and not permanent staffing, because, you know, we've worked with each of the districts around sustainability and the idea that these funds go away. But around putting, either filling in capacity where they were short in capacity or adding existing, adding additional capacity in order to better support the students' recovery. So that's kind of why we called it the Thrive. We are sort of past the initial part of the pandemic and making buildings and stuff safe for students and heading more into the helping students recover and accelerate their growth and learning. Then the next slide, ARPESER funding, which, this was the most recent round of funding. We received this funding in March of 2021. This was the $1.1 billion, which is why we called it the Transform Money, viewing it as an opportunity for many of our districts, who, some of whom received over $100 million just through this particular funding mechanism as a chance for them to do things at the district level that would make a change for their students. And the students, and the supports that they have available for their students, whether those be academic supports, social-emotional behavioral supports. We also, there is a portion of funding that is dedicated to school and building health. So there's a lot, I think it was about $170 million that was dedicated to, like, air quality projects, which is something that I know is very important and out there in the educational community and for families. So to date, we've only drawn down, I checked on this again, we've drawn down just about $38 million or 4% of the funding, which is what we would expect. These funds are available all the way through September 30th of 2024. So the district's plans for these funds are really a three-year plan. And so we are right on, they are on track for drawing down the funds and us not, you know, finding them in a situation where they have money at the end that hasn't been spent. But they actually, the nice thing about these funds, frankly, is it also gives them some opportunity to change based upon what they're finding on the ground. And I don't know if that's the last one. Is there one more? Okay. Well, this is, I think, this slide is particularly important. For the ESSER II and ARPESER applications, as I said, we were able to set up more detailed applications, which aligned the district investments with our statewide funding priorities along with a variety of subcategories that the federal government was requiring us to track. But the nice thing about it is it gives us a sense of how districts are spending their money, what types of activities. So the, by far, the largest amount of money is being spent on the Priority One, which is learning acceleration, academic renewal, and student achievement. So the vast bulk of funds are going to help our students academically. Priority Two was around family and community connection. I'm looking at the colors. And we have a lot of districts who, particularly in ESSER II, when they were looking to reengage kids for schools, you can see that there was a commitment of just about $31 million towards activities that would reengage families and students in their districts. It's a little bit smaller amount of money, but there's still a commitment of almost, of $22.5 million in ARPESER for that same purpose, continued engagement of families. Priority Three, the social-emotional mental health, which is, I know dear and near and dear to the commissioner's heart. There is an investment of, between the two sources of funding, there's an investment of $183 million for supports for students in the areas of social-emotional health and behavioral health. Priority Four, around technology. The interesting thing that you see here is between the $22 million and the $47 million is it demonstrates, well, one of the things I think it demonstrates is the state made an initial commitment of state-level funds to the technology piece. So as you remember, we bought like 80,000 laptops. We purchased hotspots, broadband. So it's enabled districts to not have to concentrate the same percentage of their resources on those types of things because the state has covered them, which means, and obviously, they can redirect those funds to other ways to support the students. And Priority Five, which was building safe and healthy schools. So, and I, okay, so I apologize. In ESSER II, Priority Five was actually, Priority Four and Five were combined. For ARPESER, we split out Priority Five as an individual priority. And as you can see, there's an investment of $254 million in projects designed to increase social, opportunities for social distancing for some of its space, projects for air quality. There's also some interesting things that schools are doing around outdoor classrooms and that types of, type of things, taking advantage of different types of educational opportunities. And yes, that is it.
Questions for Kathy?
The unexpended money, does it carry over, or how is that dealt with?
Yes. So they have, each tranche of funding has a two- to three-year funding period. So the first tranche of funding, ESSER I, they have to use those funds by this coming September. The ESSER II funding, they have available through September of '23. And this is the largest ARPESER district have available to them all the way through 9/30 of 2024.
And are you finding districts asking for more additional funds? Because maybe their expenses have gotten, you know, has increased? Or is that, are they being supported?
So yes. And one of the things that is difficult to see on these charts is that not everybody got the same amount of money. The district's allocations were dependent upon their Title I poverty metrics. So we had communities, we have small communities that, you know, across the three funding sources have received only about $100,000, whereas some of their counterparts, you know, have received closer to $200 million. So one of the things that, as Desi and myself and Laura and the commissioner have looked at it, is opportunities for us with our statewide funds to provide additional support to those districts or give them access to things that maybe they can't fund because based upon the formula, they just didn't receive a sufficient level of funding to do some of the activities that they might want to.
One of the, the person at public comments said that the ESSER funds were potentially tied to wearing masks, that they would not be eligible for the ESSER fund if they didn't have masks in the schools. It seems a little far off.
I was gonna say, I would have to go back and look. I cannot recall anything in our application that specifically states that it's tied to wearing masks. I was gonna say.
We're not aware of any requirement that requires masks in order to receive the federal funding.
Yeah.
Other questions?
All right, next up, we will transition to Dr. Shawana Tucker, who will update us on our latest talent initiative.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner, and good afternoon, board members. I'm here to provide you a brief update on where we are with reimagining educator evaluation and support. Just a little background, that our Connecticut system for educator evaluation and development, known as CEED, the Model Evaluation System, aligned to our Connecticut guidelines for educator evaluation, which were adopted in 2012 by PEE, the Performance Evaluation Advisory Committee, and revised in 2014. So pursuant to statute, we reconvene the Educator Evaluation and Support Council, known as EES 2022, which was formerly PEE. And we have been working since last year. The council is facilitated by the Talent Office and Learning Forward, who is our outside facilitator. And members of EES 2022 are comprised of the partner organizations whose logos you see at the bottom of the slide. Next slide, please. Our timeline, which has been previously shared with you, we are on target and on point. We are at Phase Two right now for extending our flexibility. We have completed our statewide stakeholder input and feedback that we are receiving from the rest, as well as from our PDEC survey. And we are preparing to make recommendations to the state board to adopt flexibilities for the 2022-23 school year at the next board meeting. And we're also working on updated guidelines based on input from our council, membership, and stakeholder feedback. And as you will see, this is a four-phase approach, so we're in Phase Two. And by summertime, we'll be moving into spring and summer, Phase Three. Next slide. Our next step, as just stated, we will have our recommendation to adopt current flexibility to the guidelines for educator evaluation for the 2022-23 school year at the next state board meeting. And by May, we are hoping to provide you with recommendations for our updated guidelines for implementation during 2023, 2024. I will note that the committee is really focused on providing guidelines that focus on professional learning, educational growth and support, and continuous improvement. And we're very fortunate to have Vice Chair Benham, that sits on our council with us and has been a part of our planning since day one. So that's just a very brief update as to where we are. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, I'd like to ask Maddie Chayka to come up and give the board a brief update on Voices for Change. This is an initiative that was announced a couple of months ago. You may have seen in the media as well, the engagement piece around our students at high school level. So Maddie, could you tell us where we are and what the next steps are for Voices for Change?
Hi, everybody. So we closed the Voice for Change proposals on Martin Luther King Day. So that was the last day for students to submit. And we ended up with 201 proposals from 60 schools across 35 districts. We'd started with 80 schools and 45 districts. We're at about 75% there for participation. And on the screen here, I have the top five districts. So Waterbury, across all of their four or five high schools in the district, submitted 35 proposals. Across CTEC, we got 22. At Danbury High School, in '17, CRET, we had 15. And then Westport Staples, where now we're from, we had nine. And right behind them was a charter school, Highville Charter, with seven, which I think really just the starting ground charter, my bad. The diversity of the types of districts that we have submitting proposals. And throughout the application process, let's get to that first bullet. We had a couple webinars with students. We had an email inbox that was dedicated to this initiative that we monitored pretty frequently. We did a couple onsite visits. We did make a visit down to Staples, and we launched at Civic Leadership High School and NCL, which is a CRET school. And there was a lot of direct outreach to district staff, not just administrative staff, but school staff and teachers, as well as legislators. And a couple days before all the applications were due, I went through all of the open applications and personally emailed each of the open applications to really get that boost of engagement at the end there. And so the next step is that we're currently reviewing right now. If any of you remember Tanya Butler, her kind of replacement to Jim Dagan-Rossini here. And he's helping me along with the review process. And then we're going to make sure they go through fiscal and legal and communicate with the district to get those ballots ready for March 11. And now, the commissioner wants to also give Rashad and Natalie a chance to talk about the experience on the ground with Voices for Change.
So at Staples, Voice for Change has been very, very well received. We have, as you can see, one of the top five number proposals. On the first day, when this launch was announced, I went down to Civic Leadership High School, and I brought a reporter with me. So we had an article go out in Inklings, which is our school newspaper. That same day, it got emailed out to the whole school. Inklings made posters for Voice for Change. We wrote a follow-up article with featuring some students and their proposals. And then we also wrote a pro-con on Voice for Change. We can tell you later. And we had an event, like Maddie mentioned, at Staples, which had Governor Lamont come down, Congressman Himes come down, Will Haskell. Maddie was there. So so many people were there. And basically, the purpose of that event was for students to pitch their ideas and to just share it with others and share it with those officials. Not that the officials would choose which idea is the best, but just to get the ideas out. I heard a bunch of group proposals. There is ones about, I'm not sure which ones actually went through, but there's definitely one that went through about, like, the, this de-launcher for your ship and engineering course. There is one about solar panels, one about therapy dogs. There's one about having tampons, free tampons in the bathrooms. There's a bunch of different proposals. And the pro-cons one, like, issue hesitation that some stu, a small group of students have with it is that some feel that because Westport is a wealthy town, that that money could have been better served elsewhere. So that's what that con side of the article was for. And the pro was how it should be expanded to more districts. So that's kind of how received it was. I've gotten a lot of questions from students as Voices for Change went on. Yeah, someone asked for, like, where to look, where to find out more information. And I also had an Instagram live with Senator Will Haskell, where we talked a lot about, more specifically, Voice for Change. We had the students from Staples listening in. So very well received at Staples, a lot of proposals. Very excited for the campaigning process and the decision.
So at Wilton, we had a Student Senate meeting a few days after the program was launched. So at that meeting, it's kind of like this only, except there's like students, a lot of students. So I basically brought it up, and I got a lot of like different, a lot of feedback about what we could do and what we should do to get, or for the type, different types of proposals. And one of the ideas that came out of it was to get student governments of schools involved because most of the public schools I've seen have some sort of student leadership program. So at my school, I just went to the student government, like, the exec board meeting, and I just told them what it was. And from what I understood, the people on that, like, student governments, they haven't much, they have a really clear idea of like what the school needs and how. much, they have a really clear idea of like what the school needs and, um, how like they could use that funding. And they had like very quick responses on what they could do with the funds. Um, so that was, that was pretty good. Uh, so they came up with a good proposal. I also went to the, um, uh, music departments because music has always been dealing with a bunch of funding issues in our, uh, district. So, uh, the band came up with a really good proposal for uniforms and stuff for the marching band, which in Wilton, it was a big problem. Uh, and we also had, uh, the video production studio at our school, um, create a proposal to expand and create more opportunities for students, internships and stuff like that. Uh, uh, and we also talked to the video production studio about creating, uh, so like we have at our school, uh, a segment called Morning Warrior, which our students listen to in, in the mornings on Wednesday. So in that, we, uh, talked to them about having a section for Voice for Change where students that submitted proposals could give information about their proposals for the whole school. And then, um, uh, basically then all of that information would be out to all the students. And then that would give all the information for how to vote and all of that later on in the year when we do get to voting. Uh, so, I mean, overall, I think, uh, it really got students past the basics into solving like real problems with the schools, um, that are affecting our schools right now. Um, students like took surveys and like actually had real concrete data that they submitted with their proposals. Um, and I think that over the last few years, um, last three years, actually, I didn't realize this until now, but freshmen, sophomores and juniors have never had a real like full normal year. So a lot of the school spirit and tradition, it's kind of like gone. So, so this was like a very good way to get students involved, um, and school spirit to get higher, I guess. Yeah.
That thought that there's never been a normal year is really scary.
Yeah.
They haven't had it.
Freshman year, no?
For us, it was.
Oh.
I had the opportunity to, um, to be at the launch and, um, at the crack, uh, and to hear the students' proposals at that point that were just thoughts. I mean, it was amazing. And then, um, to view, um, again, the one that took place in Staples. I think the board will be very pleasantly surprised and interested to hear, and I'm hoping we will when it comes to, you know, maybe April and May, maybe hear from the top five vote getters or something. But what these, this, this is like the epitome, it's me at student voice. I mean, the things that students came up with for the, just the very short, brief roundtables and things that I was able to, to view and watch, um, was just amazing. And it, um, it really, our students just have a lot of, lot of good ideas that I, I think will, some of them I think will even be launched, even if they aren't the winning, the vote getter. But, um, you know, I thank all of you and Maddie for, for doing this. This is something certainly our two student members can certainly be very, very proud of that you launched this, as student members of this board. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. Next up, uh, we will be joined by John Fraschinelli and Eric Schowill, who will give us a quick update on our health and safety.
Good afternoon. Um, just wanted to briefly update you on, uh, the updates to the vaccinations for our two categories, for children ages five to 11 years. Receiving at least one dose is 43% of that population up, um, from last month. Um, interesting to note that this is, uh, up just from the center middle of last month because the board meeting met in the middle. So, um, gaining some traction there. Uh, additional clinics have been scheduled for this age group, uh, and for ages twelve to 17, uh, the numbers continue to go up for those who are, who are fully vaccinated. Um, incidentally, you may have heard, uh, this morning that Pfizer has asked the FDA to consider vaccinations for children under five. So we'll certainly update you when we find out more about that. Um, another couple of updates, uh, we had presented on our project COVID detect, which is our screening program for, um, students, um, students in classrooms. They've expanded that program to allow now all K-12 schools. Um, before it was just, uh, elementary schools. So we've expanded to allow K-12 schools to participate in that COVID screening testing program. Um, so that is ongoing and it will also include pre-K students if those pre-K programs are, uh, co-located, uh, with the K-12, the K-12 students. So, um, that is ongoing. And it, uh, again, it includes vaccinated students now as well as unvaccinated students. And then, uh, lastly, I wanted just to mention that, um, you know, given the events, uh, in Hartford, uh, last month with regard to the overdose of the individual, of the young man, uh, in Hartford, we have issued, uh, a survey to districts, um, regarding their, um, whether they carry naloxone. Naloxone is, uh, sometimes referred to as Narcan. Narcan is the brand name, is the opioid antagonist, um, that schools can carry, um, that reverses the effects of an overdose. So we are asking, uh, districts to let us know if they carry it and, and, uh, where it's, where it's being kept. Uh, very often it's kept in the, in the nurse's office, uh, in what we refer to as the go-bag. Uh, so, uh, nurses are, can be trained, obviously, and administration, as can individuals. And we're also asking about, uh, additional information on their other substance use and misuse prevention efforts, uh, with regard to training and, and response plan.
Just one, one quick question, looking at that. You probably explained this one, I just missed it. Does the at least one dose number include the fully vaccinated or is it in addition to the fully vaccinated?
Uh, so the one, the one dose number is just the one dose, it would not include.
So it's not at least one dose, it's one dose?
Right.
Got it. Thank you. Much, much better knowing that.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. I just wanted to provide a quick update on the distribution of rapid test kits, uh, to schools across the state. Uh, since our last meeting, we have rolled out an additional 331,000, uh, rapid tests to both public and private schools here in Connecticut. Uh, this puts us now at a total of 1.75 million rapid tests, uh, to schools statewide since December 31st of 2021. Uh, additionally, over the last week, an additional 10,000 rapid tests were delivered to school bus drivers, uh, through the Connecticut School Transportation Association, which puts, uh, the total, uh, tests to school bus drivers up to 21,000, uh, rapid tests. Um, so FDE is currently working with the Department of Public Health, uh, DAS and OPM, uh, to determine what, uh, future distributions will look like. Other likely will be additional distributions, uh, down the road. We're just working that out, uh, behind the scenes. I also wanted to mention a big thank you and shout out to, uh, the State Department of Education, uh, CTEC, uh, Public Health, National Guard and Emergency Management Staff, uh, who made these distributions a reality. Uh, there's a lot of work and logistics that go on behind the scenes, uh, to get these out there into the field.
Anything else? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you both. So just to wrap it up, uh, last two slides, uh, the first one is that I had the opportunity to attend a story in, uh, Mackay at the M.O.D.E.P., who is our, our newest, uh, Connecticut's newest kid governor. Uh, so he and his calendar was sworn in over at the old state office, I think it was a week before last. Uh, and that was very exciting and just a really good opportunity for kids to see, you know, civics come alive and then be able to actively, not only learn about it, but to, to actively participate in it. So that was a really great event. Uh, and the last slide is we wanted to make sure the board was aware, um, that the education reform now, uh, report that was recently released highlighted, uh, Connecticut, uh, for our federal plan that was approved, uh, specifically called us out for, uh, areas which, uh, we're using data, uh, to inform that the types of decisions we're making along with the academic impact that, that we're trying to address. Uh, our plan that Kathy spoke about earlier and how the plan that the districts have to fill out, um, has priorities in it that are aligning to our, our federally approved plan. So those were just some of the areas that, uh, we got called out for and breakaway. And wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. concludes the agency update. Uh, Chairman Taylor, I will turn it back to you for a committee report.
Committee report, thank you. Academic standards.
That's, uh, Eric.
Yeah, okay. I can't even read the agenda without my.
That was my accountability and support. Uh, our next meeting will be next Thursday, um, which East Hartford is coming in, um, as part of our showcase series. So that will be next. And then just a reminder, uh, to board members at this time, you've probably have heard from Lisa Lumento, um, had, actually got invited to a 30-minute overview for charter renewal update. Um, our next two board meetings will be, we will be spending time renewing those charters, um, as a board. And so, um, that was, but something that came out of the, um, from Lisa that would be beneficial for all of us, just to understand the, perhaps the differences in what we've seen in the past. And so hopefully that you have been in contact and if not, please reach out to her.
Anything else?
Finance.
Finance.
Finance for your information base, basically quarterly. So, uh, we won't be meeting again until March. And, uh, so you'll get a report in, uh, the April meeting.
Okay, thank you. Legislation and policy.
I'm reporting on behalf of Alito, had to leave, uh, early, but we met this morning, um, and had an opportunity to hear from Kathy, um, provided us with an overview of the Office of Fiscal Analysis report, um, that models the more equitable funding, equitable, um, ECF funding, uh, and looked at that across all the school choice options. Um, the, uh, focus was on, obviously equitable funding and also trying to remove the disincentive that, uh, that requires districts to maybe not promote the choice options so much. And so the committee expressed their continued concern around that.
Can you not hear me? But. Thank you. Um, and, uh, uh, this is, obviously goes back several years now, um, as a concern of this committee. But the report addressed the funding, um, doesn't, uh, totally address the concerns of the committee and the committee wants to dig in a little bit more there and resurface a letter that had been previously drafted but did not move forward for a whole number of reasons, um, to the, to the full board. So the committee will, will resurface that letter, take a look at those recommendations, um, update that as appropriate and hope to be able to bring that for our March consideration of the full board. Um, also in March, we will dig in on our, our, uh, next piece of business, which is around summarizing all what we learned from the districts who came before us around the racial imbalance, um, and look at, uh, what we learned from that and think through that lens of how we can strengthen what's already on the books and propose some new ideas to move us forward and, and, uh, toward our goals around desegregated education in Connecticut. So that was our meeting earlier today.
Okay, thank you. CTEC, anything more?
CTEC, you, uh, heard the presentation on the separation and that's the extent of our report this one.
Okay, thank you. NASB.
No updates since last year.
CERC.
CERC, you received your, in the supplemental folder, um, the CERC update and it just, again, it will go through, um, the activities for IDEA, um, the district contacts, like different topics, um, that CERC oversees and has been delivering professional development on. Um, and in the last two pages, again, um, because this is certainly of an interest, is the update for the African-American, Black and Puerto Rican. Latino takes a course of studies and all the things that they have involved and will continue to be involved in doing, um, as they are finishing up their piloting and getting ready to disperse to off-school. And then they also included an update with their partnership over mental health and addiction services that they are also entering into. So that is in, in your supplemental folder.
Thank you. Remote learning commission.
Will they come back in, in first few months with some kind of feedback so that we can see where they're at?
The, for the curriculum?
But, yes, I was just, yeah, for the curriculum, yeah.
They, I, I would imagine they would. I mean, they were here just a few months ago, um, with a, with an update of where they were with the curriculum. But, um, I can ask, we have a, we have board meetings next, next, at the end of this month. And I can ask if they're planning to, uh, return.
It would be good to see where the students are at and, and what, what are they learning and, and see if it's worth, because it was something that we pushed for.
Right? Yeah. If you look at every part, there is a lot of feedback that they provide and they meet on a regular basis, those, those districts that are piloting, um, the program currently. And then, of course, we have districts that aren't teaching it, that aren't necessarily part of the pilot, it's just an ongoing type of thing. So, um, it, it does change quite a bit, the feedback that they get of different tweaks and so forth, like any curriculum.
Right.
Any new curriculum goes out, you're going to see changes in that curriculum, in some cases over years, you know, until it's really, you know, vetted out well enough. But I will ask that question if they're planning on another update and when it, when it will occur.
Remote learning commission.
Yes, uh, that is me as well. Uh, that remote learning commission met on January 25th. Um, you'll recall that we're moving toward a goal of being able to respond to the legislative requirement that we have a proposal brought to bring forward around what it would look like for Connecticut to set up a remote learning, um, uh, option for, uh, Connecticut students. And we've explored a number of different programs offered other places and are lifting learning from that to move us forward in that feasibility study. But a related but intersecting, um, charge to the department was also to develop remote learning standards for, um, grades nine to 12. The districts that currently, um, would be looking for remote, uh, to do remote learning at the high school level needed a set of standards to guide that work. And so the commissioner asked that the team that's been working on that, bring that to the commit, to the remote learning commission to review as well. So we spent that January meeting digging in, giving feedback to those remote learning, um, standards, which, uh, my understanding, as they continue to synthesize and get to something final, would ultimately come to this board, um, for approval. Uh, the remote learning commission will meet again on February 14th and we currently are on target to wrap our work up by the July deadline that we were.
Karen, I know at one point you were looking, the, the commission was looking at other, I think Florida you had mentioned has actually programs. Are these other programs that you've reviewed, are they just high school as well or are they programs that are K-12 remote learning?
Right. No, they're, they're, um, we've looked at Massachusetts, um, Virginia, uh, Florida model, um, and no, they're not, not, not restricted to.
They're not what?
They're not restricted to high school, the different things they've. Okay. All right, thank you.
God, I can't imagine owning preschool like that. Anything else that completes the agenda, believe?
Objection, we are adjourned.
All right.
Very kindly done.